I called order the regular meeting of the Lakewood City Council on October 27th, 2025 at 7:01 PM. To connect with the council meeting online, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any links to LakewoodSpeaks.org. That is our online forum for public comments. We'll be leaving that open tonight and through 10:00 AM tomorrow morning. Anyone who would like to address the city will be given the opportunity through during general public comment with a limit of three minutes and then again throughout the meeting agenda tonight as identified as we move through tonight's meeting. Will the clerk please start us off by calling the roll?
Strom.
Here.
Labir is absent. Ryan.
Here.
Cruz K.
Here.
Mayak Guerrero.
Here.
Sharzai.
Here.
Sinks.
Here.
Cruzai.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Furman.
Here.
Nystrom.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And if you are able to stand, I would ask you now, please do so to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection.
And the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. And for our first item this evening, I am going to hand over the floor to Counselor Ken Cruz for a proclamation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Small Business Saturday in Lakewood, Colorado. Whereas the city of Lakewood celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are 36.2 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.9% of all U.S. businesses. And whereas, small businesses employ 62.3 million Americans, representing 45.9% of all U.S. employees, and created a net increase of 1.2 million jobs between March 2023 and March 2024, accounting for nearly 90% of all net job creation during that period. And whereas, consumers spent an estimated $17 billion at small businesses on Small Business Saturday in 2023. And since the first Small Business Saturday in 2010, the total U.S. spending has reached an estimated $201 billion. And whereas, the 2024 holiday season saw 93% of consumers planning to shop small to some degree, and 34% of consumers plan to shop specifically on Small Business Saturday. And whereas, the city of Lakewood supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and contribute to our community. And whereas, we would like to thank our small businesses for their contributions and urge all residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, November 29th, 2025, and throughout the year. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Lakewood, I, Wendy Strom, Mayor of the city of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim November 29th, 2025, a Small Business Saturday.
Thank you, Counselor Cruz. All right, we'll start off general public comment or our first section of general public comment tonight here in just a couple of minutes. First, I will introduce some of the, we'll call it the ground rules of public comment, not only for general public comment, but throughout the evening this evening. So as I mentioned, you are lovely community members who are here to speak to us on a variety of issues this evening. We'll have a number of opportunities as we move through tonight's agenda, and I'll make sure to point the appropriate places out as we go. We do also have the sign up sheets up here that will help us navigate through that. So this is what's called the initial period of general public comment, and will allow for up to 10 speakers to provide any comment on a matter other than an agenda item, and does prioritize folks that are here visiting us with special needs. Speaking during this initial period of public comment does require signing up to speak with the city clerk in advance of the meeting. There is no pooling of time during this initial public comment period. The goal of public comment is to create an environment that welcomes all stakeholders to share their thoughts and their concerns. I would ask that whether you leave your comments on LakewoodSpeaks.org or you're here in the chambers, that they be, your comments be directed to the city council, that anyone in attendance online or here in the room this evening, respect the decorum of council chambers and practice civility. And so that every speaker may be heard, I ask that everyone here in chambers refrain from audible support or discord, applause, things like that, because again, it's important, we want to make sure that every single voice is heard while you're here this evening. For anyone who in the audience that may be uncomfortable speaking in the front of the room, you too are also, even though you're here, welcome to leave a comment on LakewoodSpeaks.org. And again, you'll be able to do that through 10:00 AM tomorrow. It is campaign season, so I do want to make sure to mention, no campaigning is allowed in public comment. Per campaign finance laws, city resources are not able to be used for campaigning, and that does include tonight's meeting. If you are speaking and have any handouts that you would like to distribute to the council, I would ask you to please provide them to our, there we go, to the raised hand up front, and those will be distributed to council following the meeting. And a quick note, I'd like to elaborate a little bit more on this. I understand we got some feedback last meeting. Want to make sure that it's very clear that this public comment session is a listen-only session. That means we are here to hear from you. We are here to receive the things that you brought to tell us. We, this is not a back and forth exchange. So if you want someone to answer questions or make comments, I would encourage you to read it out individually to councils, counselors, that does not occur tonight. And for those of you that are planning to speak tonight, throughout tonight's agenda, when you approach, you'll be given three minutes of time. You'll come up here to the lectern. I'll ask you to start by stating your name and your address, or your name and the ward that you live in, and then we'll get the three-minute clock started and get you off to the races. If you look around the room tonight, we do have a lot of people here that are here to share something that's important to them. So we also have a full agenda. We want to make sure that we continue moving through tonight's meeting so that A, every single person that can get heard is heard. I want to make sure that we get as much time for public comment tonight as possible, but also we do have business that we need to make sure that we're accomplishing this evening as well. So I am going to hold pretty tight to that three-minute mark, and what I will do is so that we again can be moving as quickly as possible to hear from as many of you as possible. Some of you have been through this before. I'll say a name, first person will come up to the front, and then we'll have a couple of others waiting. We'll call it in the wings, as if we were in theater, waiting in the wings so that as they're come up, or as we've got one speaker, we've got another one ready to move forward. So we'll walk you through if anybody has questions as we go. And I will make a mention that per our policies and procedures, the latter portion of our general public comments, so the non-adjented part, is not a guarantee. So to respect everyone's desire to be heard, again, I'm going to make sure that we move as quickly as possible through all of these so that we can make sure that we're hearing as many voices as we can. So we'll go ahead and get started with our initial general public comment. And first up, I have Zee Williams. And then in the wings, we have Amanda Phillips and Victoria Griffin.
Good evening, council. My name is Zee Williams. I'm a resident of Ward 2. Jax's celebration of life is this Saturday, and we chose to set it out this far, nearly six months after the time we learned that she had died, because we were hoping that we would have some closure by that day, that it would not be based on how she died, but instead in how she lived. And here we are, mired in trauma, full of questions, exhausted, feeling battered, honestly, and still trying to honor our friend. I've heard a lot of questions from council lately about why are they so angry? Why are they yelling at us? Why are they swearing? And I want you to understand how hard we work to be here, that we have marshals and medics and legal support, that we bring food and drinks, that we arrange ride shares. I want you to understand how measured we are, how thoughtful we've tried to be. We have not filled all 10 spots in public comment intentionally. We do not take all of the seats in this room. We have not pushed council to stay late on several nights, understanding that there are many things you have to do. We made butterflies to wave so that people weren't snapping and clapping, because our group was told we cannot do that, though others have been allowed to do so in these chambers. Jax has been disrespected twice by the chief of police in this room. We've been called slurs many times by some of the other residents attending these meetings, but yet we've been measured. So why are people shouting and yelling? You break people when you silence them, especially now, especially trans people in this political moment. You break people when they beg and plead for you to take action for them, for their friends, for their loved ones, but you choose convention and complacency. People do not shout and swear when they feel like they have been heard and cared for. But when you shut down public meetings, when you change meeting times without alerting the public, you silence them. When you don't respond to emails, when you tell Jax's mother, "I'm a parent too," to absolve in action. Jax's mom is incredibly sick right now. She told me today, "It's too late for Jax, and I have a time limit too." Let that sink in, how much that breaks you to hear. You choose to be here as city council. You choose to be here for the people. Please do things for the people. We will not be shouting and swearing and interrupting meetings when we know that we've been heard, when we know that our friend is seeing justice, when we know that the pain that we've experienced on and on and on again has been addressed. This is for every trans person, not just in this room, not just in Lakewood, not just in Colorado, not just in America, in the entire world, who feels uncared for, who is being hunted by our governments. We need to see tangible action. Long live Jax.
Thank you. Amanda Phillips?
Hello, council. Amanda Phillips, South Denver. I am here representing Sherilyn Grotan-Camus, who is, as all of you know, Jax Grotan's mother in Montana. These are her words. Silence. Silence is what you gave Sherilyn. Silence is disrespectful. Would you not agree? So I will take my three minutes and give you the same respect that you've given Jax's entire family, Jax herself, and her entire community. What do you think? Thank you, and long live Jax.
Thank you. Next up, we have Victoria Griffith, Brandy Burns Carey, and then Jamie Frederick.
My name is Victoria Griffith. I live in central Denver. I'm going to repeat what Zee said in their statement just a few minutes ago. We don't want to be confrontational. We want to participate in the same way that everybody else does. We want to come up here, take our three minutes. We don't want to be yelling and cussing at the end of meetings because you cut us off and everything like that. And Mayor Strom, I have something very specific to say to you. Two weeks ago, I was here, and you sat up there and you talked about breast cancer awareness. Jax's mother, right now, is going through breast cancer. She can't come to a lot of these meetings. She doesn't know if she's going to be alive because of that long enough to see her daughter get justice. You knew that. And then you called for a vote at, after midnight, after we all had been waiting for over five hours. And I know you say, oh, the last round of comments isn't guaranteed or whatever, and you said that you were tired. There was like 10 of us left at that point, and it's a three-minute limit. You would have been done in 30 minutes. But you called for a vote, six to five, it passes, the meeting ends, we don't get to be heard. Credit to the five that voted against, both Cruz's, and I don't have the votes in front of me. I just want to let y'all know something. If you think that this is something that you can just drag out until we get exhausted and we'll stop showing up to these, we'll stop caring, we'll stop, you know, everything that we're doing. I'm a member of a group, as a lot of the people back there are, that is dedicated to this movement. And somebody from Hungary shared a post in that group of artwork that they had drawn of Jax. Our girl made it to Hungary. This has gone global. There are people outside of the U.S., well outside of the U.S. and other hemispheres, talking about this, and we're going to keep talking about it, and we're going to keep showing up. I was here, the first meeting that I came to was about a month and a half ago, September 8th, and I came up here, and I challenged y'all to be the example, to be that shining light on a hill, and to show people how it's done, and to show people that Colorado is better, that Lakewood is better, and y'all have not done that at all. So you can deploy whatever tactics you want that you think are going to work, but the bottom line is, we're going to keep showing up, we're going to keep coming here and letting our voices heard, hopefully with permission. That's how we would rather do it. And that's it. Police oversight justice for Jax.
Thank you. Brandy Burns Carey, then Jamie Frederick, then Kai Martinez.
Good evening, city council members and Mayor Strom. I'd like to show you this picture that I took at 5:00 PM. I am here every week, an hour before the start time, before we start at 6:00 PM or 6:30. I am here an hour before that. I come from the Centennial Aurora area, and that was a beautiful double rainbow over this building. A double rainbow. Our girl was here. Our girl wasn't here wishing us luck, though. Our girl was here wishing you luck. And once again, I have two pages written here, but you guys can read that on LakewoodSpeaks.org either tonight or tomorrow, because it will be there for you. I can't read pre-printed anymore. I'm going to speak to you, like everybody was talking about this last week, where we want to talk the way things used to be. So I'm going to talk to you guys the way that it used to be, when I grew up, when my grandfather and my father, both who come from immigrant families. I am a first-generation American in this country. I graduated high school. I have children. I've paid my taxes since I was 13 years old, because I started working full-time at 14 in a small, small town in Maine. Okay? My family came for better. So I'm going to use this to talk to you the old-fashioned way, when a handshake and a word meant something in this country to everyone. We have come here, we have asked nicely, we have appreciated that you guys made that vote. This cannot wait, and we cannot say it any longer. Jax was my friend. She was my loved one. I am shaking and want to cry, not because I am just so ridden with sadness, which I am to the point that I need to be put on medication, and I've never said that in my life. I've held all my demons in because I had a terrible childhood. But at this point in my life, I can't take it no more. Jax's mother can't take it no more. This woman is dying. If something happened to your loved one, would you want to see them justice before you die? Because I sure the hell know I would. And I also know that I have a beautiful 23-year-old daughter who just turned 23 yesterday. And if it was her in this case, everyone around would have much more of a sense of urgency to find her in those 52 days. She wouldn't have been there for 52 days. The police would have searched that property. She would have been found. Everybody would have a witch hunt looking for her murderer. He's in Pennsylvania somewhere, by the way, Jax is, in case you guys didn't know. Who the hell knows where he could be now? He's got resources. What are Jax's mom's resources? I really would like to know that. And I would love to sometime, I will be reaching out to you, because I would love to have a dialogue back and forth with you guys, because this three minutes is crap. Sorry for being abrasive today, but this is what it's come to. Long live Jax. Long live Jax.
Thank you. Jamie Frederick.
Hello, my name's Jamie Frederick. My pronouns are they/she. At the last city council, many of us waited here for hours. You closed public comment without hearing the words of your community. You ask why some of us are angry, and that's why you shut us out. After we have been so patient, after we've put so much effort to be measured, so many members of my community are scared, tired, and hurting, and we are still here fighting. We will keep being here. Lakewood Police has shown throughout the entire course of this investigation that they do not want to put forth the effort to actually do anything. We need to hold them accountable. And you have seen us again and again come before you and push for Jax. I ask you to show us that you've heard us, heard the voices of our community. Actions speak louder than platitudes. Hold the Lakewood Police accountable for a beloved member of our community. So I ask you yet again what you would want someone to do if you were in our place. in our place. Show us that you are listening. Long live Jax.
Thank you. Kai Martinez, and then Brandon Pelts.
Hello. God be with you. My name is Kai, and I am from Ward III. I am here to speak on the need for independent police oversight. Because when people like the police, the coroner, and you City Council members deadname us, lie about us, and hurt us, you cause us to go missing and die in a sense far deeper than just our bodies. Our names, our legacies, who we are, and what we prayed to. When a trans person goes missing and is attacked by the system, far more than just their bodies go missing. Our name goes missing, our stories go missing. And when we are murdered, when we are lied about, our names are stolen. I stand before here and accuse you of stealing the name Jax Grotan from her. And we don't get justice. I believe, like many of you do, that there is a God that hears us pray, and that hears us cry. It hears me pray and cry. It heard Jax, and it heard Marsha P. Johnson and many others. And I can promise you this, it is angry. May Santa Maria rest your cursed soul. For I have said before that God sees you, and now I say that God hears you.
Thank you. Brandon Pelts.
Hello, my name is Brandon Pelts from Council Rock. I stand before the Lakewood City Council today as a concerned citizen and advocate for justice. We are gathered here to discuss the tragic and disturbed death of Jax Grotan, a transgender woman whose body was found in Lakewood, June 6, 2025, after she was reported missing for weeks. Jax's loss has devastated those who knew her and raised urgent questions about safety and dignity of trans people in our community. Despite repeated inquiries, our city leadership and law enforcement have yet to provide satisfactory answers. Reports were unable to determine a clear cause and further deepening the uncertainty and distress felt by Jax's loved ones and supporters. The investigation has been described as lacking transparency and accountability with issues in communication and care reported by Jax's family and advocates, including being deadnamed by officials, a painful and unacceptable act of disrespect towards Jax's identity. Today, we demand a thorough investigation, including established independent oversight with transgender representation. These steps are essential not only to serve Justice for Jax, but also to restore trust and respect in how our city supports and protects all its residents. Beyond the investigation, we must confront the underlying climate of transphobia and discrimination. We must ensure that Lakewood commits a robust policies and practices that support the safety and inclusion of transgender individuals and address bias or neglect wherever it occurs. The time for decisive action is now. I call on the Lakewood City Council to stand with us, to pledge justice for Jax Grotan, and to protect every member of our community regardless of gender identity. Let Jax's story be a catalyst for actual change, accountability, and compassion in Lakewood.
All right, thank you. That was our last speaker on the initial period of public comment. We'll move on now to the consent agenda. Counsel, do I have any items that are requested to be removed from this evening's consent agenda? Mayor Pratam Shahzai.
Yes, I'd like to move item 5A.
Any others? All right. Will the clerk please read the amended consent agenda into the record?
The consent agenda is comprised of the following items. Item 5B, R2025-63, a resolution approving an amended intergovernmental agreement with Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, DVA Mile High Flood District regarding design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements in dry gulch from Vance Street to Teller Street, and sidewalk improvements on West 10th Avenue from Wadsworth Boulevard to Salisbury Street. Item 5C, R2025-64, to terminate and release the City of Lakewood's right of first offer and right of first refusal to purchase the property located at 1800 Pierce Street, Lakewood, Colorado 80214. Item 5D, R2025-65, authority to exercise, assign, or waive the City of Lakewood statutory right of first refusal or right of first offer. Item 5E, R2025-66, establishing expedited review policies for affordable housing projects.
All right, thank you. And with that, I actually do not have anyone signed up to speak on this evening's consent agenda. Was there anyone that wanted to speak on any items on the consent agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, I'll ask for, oh, do you have one council hand up?
Yep. I just have a very quick comment, which is that to continue to see the improved flood mitigation and sidewalk in Ward II, which is all an area that has been, that had been previously really neglected, and of course, now people, as you drive around in that area, are probably experiencing the very frustrating real impact of road closures and sidewalks are difficult to pass. But it is in an effort to sort of catch that part of the city up and to make sure that our infrastructure is actually meeting the moment, both in terms of just modernization and recognizing that more people now live in that part of town than it used to be when it was more industrial. But that also, with climate change, the flood issues becomes even more pressing. It's pouring rain right now, so it's a great time to pass good water remediation and flood prevention. So it's a little thing, but it's just ongoing, and it's been happening for many years. And so I just always want to comment that I'm grateful that we are continuing as a city to focus on that.
Thank you, Counselor. May I please have a motion?
Mayor Strom, I move for the adoption of the resolutions included in the consent agenda and introduce them to the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Hooray. We have a motion and a second. Any council questions or comments? All right, seeing none, please go ahead and cast your votes. That passes 10 yeses and zero noes. Will the clerk please read 5A into the record?
Item 5A, R2025-62, approving an amended intergovernmental agreement with Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, DVA Mile High Flood District regarding construction and maintenance of drainage and flood control improvements for Lakewood Gulch downstream of Welch Street.
Okay, thank you. This previously would have been on the consent agenda, sign up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak on that particular issue that's now been pulled? Okay, seeing no hands up. I've got council question. Mayor Pratam Shahzai.
Yes, thank you. I just had a question for staff. It was alluded to in the staff memo, but we saw this topic come up a couple of months ago, and we had a lot of community reach out. Many of us on council went toward property owners' parcels to understand. And I know there was a lot of back and forth, and staff was really responsive in implementing some of the environmental recommendations they wanted to see. But there was no, like, conclusion on where we are with those property owners. I'm assuming if it's in front of us right now, we can believe that we've found a positive resolution to all that?
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Strom and council members. My name is Eric King. I'm the Design Section Supervisor for Capital Projects and Utilities. I manage a lot of the engineers in the group that are working on this project. Yeah, to answer your question, yes, there has been a lot of outreach. As you know, last year, we did the open house meeting where we invited all the residents and council members to come. We had tables with different sections, where we're on different topics related to the improvements that we're going to make. Since then, we did an independent design study with a different engineer other than the one that was working on the project to get a second opinion on what improvements would be recommended, whether they're the most, like, least impactful and environmentally friendly, you could say. We have taken some of those recommendations that came out of that design into our actual project design as well. Most recent interactions with the residents have been emailing them, requesting one-on-one meetings for the actual easements themselves, and discussed the actual final design for the project. At the beginning of October, we actually mailed out those notice of intent to start those easement negotiations. And then on October 6th, our stormwater engineer for the city met with the property owners to go over those easements and continued the negotiations and discussions of, excuse me, for the final design.
And just one follow-up question. They were made aware of tonight's meeting, then?
Yes, through all the same normal channels that we do on Lakewood Speaks.
All right. I'm sorry. Sorry, Ava. It would be public comment on that, though. So I guess my question is, it seems like there may be some additional steps. Will there be an opportunity for community, like, the design has been finalized? It hasn't? Okay. So there's still an opportunity for community input?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's really helpful.
Any other questions?
We do have one more hand up, so you might stick around just in case. Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. Yes, I had the assumption that we were voting on something final. And so as I'm reading through it here, we're voting on a maintenance of drainage and flood control, just improvements, but no final design. Do I have that right, what we're voting on?
So the initial, or the original IGA was primarily for the design of the project. This particular amendment is adding additional funds for construction. We leverage our relationship with Mile High Flood District. Every year, they contribute a certain amount, and if we contribute, then they'll match. And in this case, it's primarily just to get that local match from Mile High Flood District. But the funds for this one are going towards construction.
Great. Well, that's a good thing, isn't it, to get more funds? And then, if you could just walk us through, after you get more funds, the next step, you'll be meeting more with neighbors, et cetera. How will that work?
Yeah, we have gotten some comments from some of the property owners, specifically related to some of the bank treatments through the independent design review that we did. They recommended some more natural treatments for both the bank that's closest to the property owners and the bank on the opposite side. We have gotten, you know, different comments related to boulder size and installation techniques. Yeah, as we work through the final design, we are taking input from the residents. There's only so much that we can do, so the input is limited in what we can change. But we are doing our best to try to accommodate all those questions and concerns.
Okay. Thank you. And just again, finally, to make sure I'm understanding correctly, the vote tonight is to access the funds from Mile High Flood District, correct?
Correct, yeah. It's to contribute more funds to the project for construction.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. Just following up on that line, since it's not a final design, are we going to hear about the project again, or is that kind of, once we vote on it?
There will be another amendment next, probably next year, to add the remaining funds for, to actually construct the project.
Okay.
This will not provide enough funds to construct the entire project.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Counselor Maia Guerrero.
Given that this was sort of such a controversial conversation the first time, and it sounds like maybe things haven't been fully resolved, can you tell us a little bit more about what the continued process for public engagement and comment and, like, shaping of the design is going to be, given this touchy matter?
Yeah. Well, right now, we are in the process of negotiating the easements. And along, most of the time with those negotiations, property owners ask for certain concessions such as planting of trees or what the rehabilitation looks like, accessing certain parts of the property. So all of those types of conversations will be part of the easement negotiations, whether or not they want boulders on this side of the bank or that side. But as we continue to design, that's really where most of those interactions occur, is with the easement discussions.
So that will require, like, specific engagement and outreach to those people that...
Yes.
Rather than, it won't be the broader public, like, it's publicly posted?
No.
It will be specific and targeted? Okay, that was what I was looking for.
Yeah, one-on-one meetings with the property owners. I think we actually met as a group. I was not part of the conversations on the 6th, but we try to meet with them individually, but sometimes if they want to meet as a group, we allow that as well.
Great. Thank you so much. That was exactly the answer I was looking for.
All right, thank you. Seeing none, our hands up.
Thank you very much.
And may I have a motion, please?
Mayor Strom, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-62.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any other council comments, questions, debate? No debate. Okay. All right, then, go ahead and please cast your vote. That passes 10 yeses and zero noes. Will the clerk please read item 7A into the record?
Item 7A, second reading in public hearing on ordinance O2025-33, authorizing the purchase of real property located at 8745 and 8755 West 14th Avenue, Lakewood, Colorado, for municipal purposes to facilitate permanent supportive housing, including acceptance of a deed therefore.
Thank you very much.
So before we get into this ordinance, and there's actually three that are a little bit, we'll call it, related, I want to just share a couple of things so everybody, we're starting kind of on, you know, level ground, and because we're doing things tonight that are a little bit different than what you'll typically expect to see within council chambers. So what, we do have an injunction and order for one of these votes this evening. It is something that, because of the time-sensitive nature of funding, also the fact that we've had this on the agenda for a while, we are able to decouple the vote with the public hearing and the council questions and conversations. So what you're going to see us move through this evening is to, the opportunity to hear from community, also the opportunity for us to ask questions as well as make amendments. But at the end of the day, we will not be voting on the final passing or not passing of these ordinances this evening. So I would encourage you, if this is the reason that you're here tonight, that you're interested in, follow tonight's meeting either now or check back with us tomorrow. Watching the video, you'll be able to see what the next steps are and the date that we do plan to come back together. So I wanted to set that stage so that we all know, because I know as we move through here, it might get a little bit confusing, especially for those of you that have been around and followed this process for a bit. There was one thing, one other thing I wanted to mention, and it's completely stepped out of my mind, so we'll just forget that part. Oh, the other thing was, I do, we need to be very sure that we're addressing the uniqueness of the ordinance within the public hearing. So you might recall, if any of you followed through the zoning, it was, you know, I left it fairly flexible. People could come in. Because we broke it up, there were a lot of different topics on different nights. It was kind of hard to keep track of all these. Tonight, I will need to hold the line to make sure that we are all speaking to the appropriate ordinance. So there might be a need, that I may need to interrupt someone and let them know we need to have you come forward at a different time. It looks to me like Clerk's office, Ms. Salazar, thank you very much, like, we've got everybody signed up appropriately, so my hope is that we'll be able to move through this as clearly. But wanted to let you know, the first ordinance will be, however they ordered, an agreement to lease property. Are we doing, no. The first one is for the city considering buying property that the Action Center now operates out of. The second ordinance, distinctly different, leasing that property back to the Action Center until construction is complete. And the third would be selling Emory to the Action Center once the city purchases it from the school district. So those are three very distinct things. If you're coming here tonight to speak to the idea of the city selling the Emory School to the Action Center, that's going to be the third ordinance. So I will, you know, help guide us as we go through. If we've got any questions, I'll try to, you know, help everybody walk through that, because I know that this is a little confusing. a little confusing, and want to thank everybody ahead of time for your, your patience and flexibility as we move through a little bit of a clunky agenda this evening. So with that, I do have one person that has signed up to speak on Item 7A, this, again, is the purchase of the property located at 8475 and 80, I'm sorry, 8745 and 8755 West 14th Avenue, and that is Mr. Bradley Bruce. Skip you, okay. All right, never mind, not Mr. Bradley Bruce. Mr. Clerk, can we instead have you start us off by reading it into the record?
Did I, did I not read it into the record? I can certainly read it in the record again. 7, 7A.
Did you?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think we got it.
Let's do it again.
Okay.
Sorry.
Item 7A, second reading in public hearing, Ordinance O2025-33, authorizing the purchase of real property located at 8745 and 8755 West 14th Avenue, Lakewood, Colorado, for municipal purposes to facilitate permanent supportive housing, including acceptance of a deed therefore.
Okay, thank you very much. And for this topic, oh, I'll point out, liquidspeaks.org, not only is our online public forum, but is also the place where we put all kinds of information about everything that we're voting on. So if you want to learn more about any of the votes that we are discussing tonight and/or other nights, liquidspeaks.org, go to the appropriate meeting, many of you have found it for public comment. If you look at there, it also has places for staff memos and other backup information. You'll be able to find a lot there. We do not have a presentation on tonight's ordinance. Here, there is not a presentation on Liquid Speaks, but there is backup information. With that, I will go ahead, we do not have any speakers on this topic, may I please have a motion?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Ordinance-O-2025-33 on second and final reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any council questions or amendments? Counselor Lowe, then Counselor Maia Guerrero.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Parker, could you please speak? I, I understand that you've had a chance to review an appraisal that was done by an independent appraiser of the property in question. Could you speak to what that appraisal says about the, the value that the appraiser found for the property, all in?
Absolutely, in fact, the, the $4 million price tag is based on that appraisal, so appraisal done just last year, found that the, these two properties together were worth $4 million.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker. I, just for the record, I've also had a chance to review that appraisal, and that is very clearly what it says, and there's a great deal of more information that sort of supports how the appraisal and the, the independent appraiser came to that determination. So I just think it's worth noting for the record that the property is valued at 4 million. It is not, despite some of the comments that have been made, valued at less than that. We are paying the price that the, an independent appraiser found the property is worth, correct?
Yes, sir.
And just while we're on the topic, can, again, for the record, and so that, to kind of clarify this discussion, we are, of course, extremely gratified and excited that we're on track to open the Navigation Center, hopefully as early as December, on 8,000 West Colfax, which is great news. That'll be, I believe, 103 beds, with 24/7 support, trauma-informed design, a ton of great resources, funded by a state grant, awesome news. And that, the, the design for that is about two weeks of, of service. In other words, that's not a long-term housing solution for our unhoused population beyond about two weeks, correct?
Yes, I mean, it could go longer, but it's definitely a temporary solution.
So right now, I mean, we've talked about this a lot as a council, the city, Lakewood does not have sort of, we, we are lucky that we have one or two permanent supportive housing properties that opened within the last year or two, but Lakewood currently does not have a dedicated area that, that, that we, you know, where permanent supportive housing or other transitional housing for our unhoused population, you know, for medium and long-term needs, you know, beyond two weeks. There's no area where that, where that could be right now, and, which is part of the reason that we're so interested in acquiring this property, correct?
It's a big missing piece of the puzzle, absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Maia Guerrero.
I just wanted to, because this is really the time for us to get to talk about these, these, the series of things that hopefully worked together, even though we're not able to vote on them this evening. And I just, I want to say that, first of all, I know that Counselor Cruz, I, Cruz and I have talked about the potential work, the potential use of the Action Center, and the importance of really keeping it as a community use. I think the notion that it could one day be some type of housing is great, I think there's lots of other services that are needed and continue to be needed as, as this network of really how to pull people out of homelessness, how to keep people housed, and that North Lakewood, of course, has traditionally, like I was talking about with the Flood District, been a little bit underserved and under-invested in. So this is a way to make sure that the, the, the longer term, assuming that we're able to pass this, the longer term move into the larger space, that it will increase the Action Center's incredible work that they have been doing for decades in Lakewood, and really increase that capacity at a time when we are seeing the safety nets just be gutted at the national level. We in Lakewood are trying to maintain and increase them. And it's harder and harder without those national grants, but it's something I'm incredibly proud of, and I'm really impressed by the work of staff to financially try to make that happen, to have a long-term vision with short-term plans, and having this even be a conversation in this way compared to four years ago when I was first elected, just this, it would not be like this. It, it just, it would be very difficult, and I know, I know that there's still folks who don't feel great about all of these uses, but on average, our community wants to see people be okay, and people want to see children be fed, and they want to see people stay housed. So the increased capacity of the Action Center is obviously amazing, but this idea that we're going to be able to additionally keep this resource in North Lakewood, so that we're not decreasing the services there, and we're not decreasing the community value or the city investment in that part of town, where we have been working so diligently over the last handful of years to try to right, to right-size that. So I just want to say I'm really impressed by this, it's been a long time coming, I know that we've talked about it at some ward meetings, there's been a lot of community conversations, both about the new Action Center potential, but also, really, I've heard from a lot of folks that they want to make sure that they see that building stay in community use, and that they want to see it used to support the most vulnerable among us. So I'll probably have more to say about the actual expansion as well, but I think specifically because of North Lakewood being under-invested in, historically, the Action Center had been the one place, the beacon of hope, and we've then seen, over the last decade or less, all of these other services pop up around it. So now we're in a place where they can move, they can graduate, and we can add some of these other pieces to that puzzle. But it's truly incredible work. We know that we think, we're, we're afraid that food stamps is going to lead to people going hungry in our city in a week from now. And like, it could not come at a better, more important time for us to be expanding these services and be investing in this part of town. And I just cannot state enough how proud I am of my colleagues up here and how impressed I am with staff for trying to make this happen. It's very ambitious in a time when the entire nation wants to see this type of thing fall apart, we're holding strong on providing services for our people. So, thank you all for the incredible work on this, and thank you for all of the community folks who have shown up, who care about it, who have talked about it, who have emailed me about it over the last years, who helped the whole time to, to just make sure that this type of work is able to happen and continue.
Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you, and I couldn't say most of that better, so I will say ditto to most of what my co-counselor said, and as a member of the Iber neighborhood, although this is on the Ward 1 side and I'm on the Ward 2 side, I'm grateful that we are looking towards a vision in which this stays in our community, towards a community function, and I'm looking forward to what that is going to look like. And with that being said, I would love to propose a clarifying amendment to the ordinance for folks who have nerded out on permanent supportive housing and other types of affordable housing solutions. There's a lot of different ways of delivering permanent supportive housing, and so my understanding is for the clarity of keeping all of the ways of delivering permanent supportive housing on the table, whether that be a site that is exclusively permanent supportive housing, or one that integrates folks with, in permanent supportive housing with other residents and with other services, that it would be helpful to clarify that in this ordinance as written. And so I'd like to make a motion to, following permanent supportive housing... Oh, good, sorry, I'm sorry, make a motion to where it says, permanent supportive housing add and other affordable housing.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any council comments about the amendment? Counselor Ryan, then Counselor Maia Guerrero.
So, this is point of information, or request for council to speak up. Can we vote on amendments? Are we real clear that we're not going to make the judge grumpy if we vote on an amendment? Or do we need to table the amendment and then vote on that when we're allowed to?
The language of the temporary restraining order is to enjoin the city council from voting on the ordinances. So we will not be voting on the ordinances. I don't think taking action to modify the ordinances is within the scope of voting on the ordinances. So I think it's within the rules, but the secondary question is, what will annoy this judge? I, I don't know.
I just, I just worry that if we're trying to slice the baloney a little too thin here, that perhaps, you know, we have whatever discussion on amendments and things like that, but that I would urge us to hold off on any actual votes that even remotely touch, taste, sound, feel, like anything with these ordinances, because I don't want to get the judge unnecessarily grumpy.
I don't see that there's any harm on letting people know what amendments that we'll be bringing forward, and then the same thing that we're planning on doing on the ordinances themselves, table, make the amendment, second it, but table any action. I think our real goal tonight is something that district court judges don't have experience with, and that is, we really want the public to know what we're thinking and how we're thinking about moving forward. The city council had noticed this out to the public for weeks before the judge made this last-minute decision, and we didn't want the public to think suddenly that we had to hide it for anyway. So, anything we can do this evening so that the public knows what we're doing, I think is fine, but if we want to table action on all votes until a date certain, I, I think that's, that's a safe way to move as well.
Let me just say, I'm in, in favor of this ordinance, I'm in favor of the amendment. My, my question is not to undercut that in any, in any sense, if, you know, but for the, the judge's actions, I, I think we would be voting right now and approving it. I would urge us, though, not to take any votes on, even on amendments, as long as we know what they are, we've signaled them, and whenever the judge allows us to move forward, we'll move forward in all haste.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Maia Guerrero.
I just wanted to ensure that staff feel like that amendment is, like, clear enough. I know we've been talking about where affordable housing is defined in our statutes, but I assume that the resolution would essentially just refer to however it's defined in our, I think we now have zoning code definitions, but then we're going to have the IZ conversation, so.
I think to the intent that the, that the amendment is made to increase flexibility, that's, that's...
Fabulous. Counselor Lowe.
Okay, rolling with the punches a little bit here, and trying to be as flexible as possible. We, there, there had been quite a bit of discussion over the last couple of days, and my, my, my very strong understanding was there was no issue with making amendments as long as we didn't take a full vote on the amendment. But obviously, we want to be, to, to, to use Counselor Ryan's phrase, we, we don't want to slice the baloney too, too close on anything that approaches a legal issue. So this really is an issue for the city attorney, I mean, I, I just want to underscore this, it sounds like the city attorney is, is advising us that out of an abundance, out of, let's say, an extreme abundance of caution, she thinks a, a slightly more conservative course would be to not vote on amendments. Did I, did I hear that right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go along with that. I'll just say, I think it's a shame, because, you know, the whole point is, we want to have these amendments, you know, in, in a, in a regularly noticed meeting, and the whole idea is to do this as transparently as possible, and we, we came with a couple of amendments, and we want to be able to have this in front of everyone, so it's, it's a shame to me that we can't do that tonight. I am going to suggest that for anyone that has an amendment, they do what Counselor Cruz just did, that they literally move the amendment and read the amendment out, so that everyone can see exactly what amendments will be voted on. We discuss the amendment, and then we table each amendment. I know that's cumbersome, but that would be my strong preference, so the public is, is extremely aware of exactly what amendments are going to be offered, when we then subsequently are able to actually vote on this, hopefully. Ms. Brown, is that, is, just procedurally, is that reasonable to sort of, with each amendment, just move the amendment, then table the amendment, and not vote on it? Is that a, a procedurally sound?
I think that's procedurally sound.
Okay, and then, if, if at such time that the injunction would be lifted, we could then, what, we would then just move the amendment again, or would we untable the amendment? I guess we can figure that out later.
Well, we'll be tabling the amendments to a date certain, when the tabling motion is made. So all of these motions will come back to the city council at the date certain that the city council decides, and at that point, the city council will know exactly what amendments are pending, the public will know exactly what amendments are pending, and the action can be taken up or down relatively quickly.
Okay, so just purely procedurally, for each council that moves an amendment, they will then subsequently move, what, to table the amendment indefinitely, to a date certain?
We're prepared over here.
Yes, so, so the action is, I move to amend Ordinance 33, to add the words, as the council members already stated, someone else can be, say second. It should, at that point, you can discuss it publicly, but no action will be taken, the next action will be, I, I think it'd be appropriate if the person who made the motion makes the follow-up motion saying, I move to table this action, too.
Again, I, I think my recommendation would be for any amendments that folks envision offering on any of these three ordinances, that they be moved, as Counselor Cruz just did tonight, in the interest of full transparency.
All right, wait, while we wait for the appropriate person to have the appropriate amendment, any other hands up? Seeing none, the floor is yours when you're ready, Counselor Cruz.
I move to table the question until a virtual special meeting held on Wednesday, October 29th, 2025.
Second.
Point of information, is this a motion to table the amendment or the ordinance?
That was the amendment.
Okay.
Just point of clarification for council, would it be appropriate, or to such other time as, I mean, is there, if for some reason Wednesday doesn't happen, is there a way that we don't have to?
I have a point of order, which is that this feels like a lot of discussion about legal advice in a very public arena, and I feel uncomfortable with not just afferring to the city attorney and to our mayor on the process at this moment.
Mayor, may I answer?
Yes.
The, there will be a motion taken in public during general public business tonight that is going to allow you all to vote to hold a subsequent meeting. Part of that motion is going to include or take administrative action to reset this date if necessary. So I don't think we have to build it into every single motion, we're going to build it into the single motion that we do at the very end to actually hold the special meeting.
Thank you.
So with that, do we need to actually vote on this tabling?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so please go ahead and cast your votes to table. That passes 10 yeses and zero noes. Counselor Sinks, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I, I had my hand up before the amendment, and so what I was going to talk about was, again, staff's work on, on this, however, what I wanted to do was just step back and give really the big picture. And so, you know how our terms are offset? So there were five of us that were elected two years ago, I'm one of those. And so as we knocked on doors, it's like, where are you... And so, as we knocked on doors, it's like, "Where are you running?" Well, I'm running for blah, 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 and I'm concerned about what we can do about the homeless. And then, vice versa, we heard that from people, you know, that we were talking to, and they said, "Yeah, we need to do something about the homeless." So, then, fast forward a bit, then we get elected. And so, those of us up here that were elected two years ago, we probably all ran on, yes, we want to do something about the homeless. And so, the way all of this works is that staff receives the priorities from council. And so, while staff has done a great job working on this, it's the direction of the council. It's what we ran on, and then we say, "This is what we need. This is what we're hearing, what we need." And we all agree. And so, now, staff, what can you do to make it happen? And so, what we're voting on tonight are three things, these three things that we're discussing, one of which we just discussed the first. So, these are the way it's played out, that staff has worked on this to bring it to us to say, "Yes, here's an opportunity. Here's what we can do because we know that one of your priorities is to help the homeless in our community." And by helping the homeless, also helping the neighbors that live there and might have homeless camping out close to their homes and so on. So, I see all of this as a win-win. I see it stemming from citizens and stemming then from council, hearing the citizens, and then stemming from staff that heard council and said, "Okay, hey, here's some great opportunities." And I might just also add how awesome it was to go to Jefferson County School Board meeting early last year, if I didn't look up the date, but to look it up and say, "Hey, there's some opportunities with these schools being closed, and we know that these schools were built from our property taxes. We're interested in having this remain in the community as a community resource." And so, it's been really awesome to see all of it play out that way. And again, I'm appreciative of this council, appreciative of the citizens, first of all, though, that have said, "Yes, let's take care of our unhoused." And then, we heard you, and then we went to staff, and staff also heard us and found these means that we're voting on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lowe.
Thank you, Counselor Sinks, said eloquently. I just want to say this for 30 seconds, just to make absolute sure that no one gets confused by this over the course of this discussion. This ordinance is about the city acquiring the current Action Center site on 14th Avenue. So, the conversation we've been talking about, you know, including permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, is for the Action Center site on 14th Avenue. That is not the Emory site. There were obviously, I mentioning that because there were some folks that were told wrongly that there was the possibility of the Emory building being used for overnight shelter or housing or temporary shelter. We'll get to that later, as the mayor mentioned, but when you hear us talk about housing, 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 that's about the current Action Center site on 14th Avenue. I just want to say that really explicitly in case anyone, because given that both ordinances are on the agenda, I want to make sure that no one gets confused about that. So, just throwing that out there.
All right. And with that, may I please have a motion to table?
Mayor, I move to table the question until a virtual special meeting held on Wednesday, October 29th, 2025.
Second.
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any other conversation about the motion? Seeing none, please go ahead and cast your votes. Passes 10 yeses and zero noes. Will the clerk please read item 7B into the record?
Item 7B, second reading and public hearing on ordinance O-2025-34, authorizing the execution of an agreement for lease of property located at 8745 and 8755 West 14th Avenue, Lakewood, Colorado, buy-in between the City of Lakewood, Colorado and the Action Center.
Thank you. Another one we do not have a presentation on. Again, there is some backup information available on LakewoodSpeaks.org. May I please have a motion on this one?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2025-34 on second and final reading.
Second.
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second. I have no one signed up to speak on this topic for public comment. Would anyone like to speak specifically about the leasing back of the building for the Action Center on the 14th? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any council questions? Or comments? Okay. Seeing none, may I please have a motion to table?
Mayor, I move to table the question until a virtual special meeting held on Wednesday, October 29th, 2025.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any hands about the, to discuss the motion to table? Seeing none, please go ahead and cast your votes. All right. And that passes 10 yeses and zero noes. Will the clerk please read item 7C into the record?
Item 7C, second reading and public hearing on ordinance O-2025-35, authorizing the sale of real property located at 1275 South Teller Street, Lakewood, Colorado, to operate as a community service facility, including a deed restriction therefore.
Okay. Thank you. And for this agenda topic, we do have a presentation. And to get us started, I will hand the floor over to Travis Parker, our Chief of Sustainability and Community Development. Mr. Parker, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, this final ordinance tonight, as you've been discussing, is for sale of the Emory School Building. As you recall, several months ago, the council authorized the purchase of the entire Emory School Site, which is 17 acres, for $4 million, $3 million basically for the fields that the city will keep, and then $1 million for the school that then will be sold, or you're deciding if it will be sold to the Action Center tonight. So, we have a presentation by the Action Center, and so I'd like to introduce Pam Breyer, the Director of the Action Center, to do a presentation on what they intend to do with the building.
Good evening. I think we have slides. Hoping there's slides.
We might need two or three minutes to get this queued up.
Okay.
So, I apologize.
All right. I think we're all set now. Good evening. My name is Pam Breyer. I'm a proud resident of Lakewood and the CEO of the Action Center. Mayor Strom, city council members, I'm grateful to have this opportunity to come before you this evening to share just a little bit about the Action Center, our long history of serving the community of Lakewood and beyond, and our hope to gain your support this evening to purchase the Emory School, to create a community resource center to better serve the needs of our community. As you may know, the Action Center was founded in 1968 by a group of local women, volunteers from our own community, who saw families and individuals in our community who needed support and decided to do something about it. While the needs of our community have grown and evolved over time, the Action Center has also grown and evolved to meet those changing needs. But we have always remained true to our mission, providing an immediate and compassionate response to those in our community experiencing hardship by offering the resources and services needed to stabilize lives and promote pathways to lasting change. Today, the Action Center has evolved from that volunteer group to having 40 full-time staff members, who are joined by over 1,000 volunteers a year, who help us to respond to our community with dignity and compassion. With that team, last year, we responded to 61,000 visits to the center from our community members, providing services like our free grocery and clothing market. We distributed 2.4 million pounds of food to families struggling with food security. In addition to food and clothing, we distributed $1.6 million of financial assistance in our community, assistance like rent assistance, utility assistance, an emergency bill pay program to keep families whole, housed, and safe. We helped over 1,000 families with navigation, one-on-one coaching support, breaking down the overwhelm, and supporting families in finding more affordable housing, childcare, enrichment programs, healthcare. We walk beside our neighbors and help them find their strength and courage, help them tackle the challenges one at a time. Today, the need for the Action Center and organizations like ours is greater than ever. These stats are likely not a surprise to any of us in the room. We are all seeing and experiencing, or having friends and neighbors who are impacted by the increased cost of housing, groceries, childcare. The demographics of those coming to the Action Center tells us how many of us are feeling the strain of getting by today. By the Action Center, at the Action Center, we serve hard-working members of our community, many working multiple jobs, seniors on fixed incomes, and nurses, teachers, your neighbors, perhaps some of you. Today, so many members of our community are facing unprecedented challenges with trouble finding and accessing the services they need to thrive. While we all need convenient and accessible resources, we don't make it easy. Organizations are siloed and spread apart. We have amazing organizations in our community, many of them doing incredible work, but each one has its own mission and purpose, and that makes it difficult for community members to find all of the resources they need in one place. Oftentimes, they come to one organization for one kind of help and are sent across the county or across the region to get the other pieces of support they need to make their family whole. We need places to come together. We need places where communities can get all kinds of supports, different resources available in one location. We need places to come together, to grow together, to support one another, to celebrate, to learn, to help. The Action Center knows that we can't meet all of the needs of our community alone. We need to work together. So, we have a solution. Our solution and our vision for the Emory Campus is to create an integrated, seamless family community center at Emory. The Action Center has always been a collaborative organization, working across boundaries with nonprofits, schools, faith communities, and government entities. We understand that our community is better served when we're working together and not at odds, when we're partnering with high-impact organizations and each working to our strengths and expertise. You will see on the slide a vision of what we could do in the building together. The Action Center services, in addition to medical and dental care, higher education, behavioral health care, workforce development opportunities, kids programming, enrichment classes, life skills, family support services of all kinds. We want to create a center for the whole community, and we want to design this center around the family, around the individual in our community, and have the system of collaboration be designed with their ease and their accessibility at the center of the design. This is just an example of the high-impact partners that the Action Center has been talking to for a year and a half about coming together in deep collaboration to serve community better. Organizations like Cross Purpose, who do workforce development and help families have a pathway to greater stability through higher-paying jobs that can support families with benefits that allow them to think about a future that might entail homeownership. Red Rocks Community College has a partner to come into the space with us and provide graduation, sorry, high school diploma program for community members who are older adults who don't have a high school diploma, and other certifications that help people move on their path forward in workforce development. Skyhawk Sports, a well-known sports organization and community that serves kids from young ages, toddler, all the way through middle school. They're very interested in the beautiful gym at Emory and managing that gym for us, and when they don't have things happening for kids, bringing in organizations to serve seniors, to serve others in the community who need places to practice and play. So, Skyhawk Sports is an exciting potential partner in the space. Paragon Behavioral Health is just that, a behavioral health organization that would provide behavioral health services to kids, to adults, full wraparound services in that field. Jefferson County Public Health wants to bring its clinical services to our space, and they're very focused on their Women, Infants, and Children Program, their family planning work, and their work around vaccine access and other preventive healthcare services. So, this is just a sampling of the organizations that we're talking to. We're also hoping to have early childhood education in the space and other programs that really help to round out the services that the community needs. We know there are other needs. This is what we've heard from community in our conversations. We've been talking to community for several years about if we could create a center that brought you more than just the Action Center could bring, what would you be looking for? And this is what they told us, and this is what they continue to ask for every day when they come to the Action Center. And so, I want to just point your attention to the quote at the bottom of this slide, which says that families are three to four times more likely to achieve success with bundled services. That's the Center for Working Families in the East. They've been doing this work for a long time and have seen great success. There are huge examples around the country of organizations doing the brave work of working outside of the borders of each of their nonprofits, being flexible, doing things a little differently so that, again, the community members can be at the center... provide behavioral health services to kids, to adults, full wraparound services in that field. Jefferson County Public Health wants to bring its clinical services to our space, and they're very focused on their Women, Infants, and Children Program, their family planning work, and their work around vaccine access and other preventive healthcare services. So this is just a sampling of the organizations that we're talking to. We're also hoping to have early childhood education in the space and other programs that really help to round out the services that the community needs. We know there are other needs. This is what we've heard from community in our conversations. We've been talking to community for several years about if we could create a center that brought you more than just the Action Center could bring, what would you be looking for? And this is what they told us, and this is what they continue to ask for every day when they come to the Action Center. And so I want to just point your attention to the quote at the bottom of this slide, which says that families are three to four times more likely to achieve success with bundled services. That's the Center for Working Families in the East. They've been doing this work for a long time and have seen great success. There are huge examples around the country of organizations doing the brave work of working outside of the borders of each of their nonprofits, being flexible, doing things a little differently so that, again, the community members can be at the center of the design of the work and be served as well as we can. So the shared vision statement we've come together with our partners to create is to redefine and revolutionize how we create community, belonging, and well-being, helping people discover, access, and experience the supportive health, wellness, and holistic services they need to thrive. And I just wanted to show a few images of what we are imagining Emory might look like in this new life form. A school is the heart of a community, and our goal is to reopen Emory and once again have this center be the heart of the community, keeping a community asset as an asset, a source of pride, a center of community well-being and resilience. This is how we're imagining the front entry of the school turning into a welcoming space for community. You'll see a big front desk where we'll have staff and volunteers who know all about all of the resources in the building, help people to find their way to those resources. We'll have staff members there who are ready to talk to folks coming in the door and hear their story and understand what it is they need and what they need first, and help them develop a path and a plan to get those needs met. People coming to the building won't have to tell their story eight different times to eight different organizations. We will have systems where we will share information so that someone asks for help once, and as they go to the other resources in the building, there'll be that information that is shared so they don't have to keep repeating themselves over and re-traumatizing themselves as they talk about that need. It is so hard to ask for help, and we know that from the folks coming to the Action Center every day. And so we want to make this easy and dignified. This is the cafeteria at the school, and we would like to turn this into a community cafe, community center. So in the community cafe, we're looking for a workforce development partner who will run a restaurant and train people in culinary skills. At the same time, it'll be a cafe that's available to the staff members, to the volunteers, to the community surrounding Emory, and to those coming for help. So there can be meals, there can be coffee, there'll be spaces for people just to come and be with one another, play games, be social, interact with one another. We know that isolation is a huge problem in our communities today, and we want this center to be a place that brings people together, allows people to connect, allows people who might not otherwise have a chance to meet each other to meet each other and understand, "You're not so different than I am, and now I know you. We have a lot in common." So there will be opportunities for folks to come to the building to learn, to grow, and just to be, and this is a space we hope they can come to just be. It's a flexible space. You can see there's a stage at the back of the cafeteria. We plan to keep the stage, so maybe there can be kids' music concerts happening in the space or theater. There'll be opportunities for community groups to rent the space and use it for meetings or presentations. We really want this space to be designed and informed by community, community need, and what people are telling us they want to see and do in the space. This is an example of the Action Center spaces that we hope to create, the calm, welcoming feel for adults coming for support. There'll be quiet spaces for small classes, and there'll be individual spaces to meet with staff members, to hear and to support their needs. And this is another example of an Action Center space. What we hear a lot right now with folks coming to the Action Center is it's hard to come if you're a parent with a child or an adult caregiver of a child. We don't have that kind of space for safe, with safe spaces for kids to be kids and to play and to be in the right, you know, out of the way of the adult traffic and in a place that feels good. And adults are hesitant to bring kids because they have to focus on adult things. And so we want to create the space where there'll be kids who will be taken care of by adults, and they'll be in a good, happy place while their parents are getting the supports they need or going to classes. This is just another view of the hallway and the signage that helps people find their way through this rather large building, so we'll have it color-coded and help people find their way to the resources they need. This is an image of the Action Center grocery as we imagine it being at Emory, much, much larger. If any of you have been to the current Action Center, you'll know that our grocery is wonderful but tiny, and because it's so small, it necessitates people needing to make appointments to come to receive the food assistance. And sometimes they have to wait a very long time for those appointments. And so this big space and program that we found allows people to come and shop as needed when they need, free shopping, and to use points that we will put on a card, and when those points run out, they'll refill the next month. But people who will shop will be in control of that experience. They'll come when they need to, and they'll take what they need at that moment, and they'll come back on another day for things that they need on those days. So we're really excited about this new model. This is another image of the market with our clothing right there beside the food, so you don't have to go to one building as you do right now for clothing and another building for grocery. It's all right in the same space. Again, our family zone area, and the space is right next to it where parents will be able to learn and work with our team. We don't really have a rendering of the gym because the gym is in beautiful shape and doesn't need any work at all, so we're just representing the gym here as a space we plan to hold on to for community need and community use, and we're so excited about that space. And this is our healthcare wing. So again, I mentioned Jeffco Public Health will be there. We're looking for a primary care partner and having really good conversations right now with a potential partner, and behavioral health services right outside of this space. So that's what we're imagining for Emory, what we hope to create by coordinating services, bringing resources together under one roof. We want to dismantle the barriers that are there for folks in our community who really need a supportive environment, a place to get all of the resources they need without having to travel across town, without having to take multiple days off of work, without having to find extra childcare. We want to build a connected community. We want to multiply the impact that the Action Center has by partnering with other organizations who we know our community members desperately need to connect to. We want to empower families to continue to help us design this space, help us bring additional partners. These are just a few of the anchor partners we've been talking to. We are also talking to others who aren't represented here, who could be visiting partners in the space and bring things that we haven't yet mentioned, like maybe tax services or law, legal services, or any number of other things that the community may tell us it wants inside the neighborhood. So we're so excited to bring this to you. We're so excited to repurpose this beautiful community asset and keep it as a centerpiece of pride and real impact for this city of Lakewood and the surrounding area. And thank you so much for your time and for your attention and your support, and I'm anxious to answer whatever questions you have.
Thank you. I know we do have two amendments that councilors want to bring forward tonight, but before we do that, do we have any questions, comments, council? Counselor Lowe, then Counselor Nystrom.
Mayor, can I just clarify? Do you think questions for the presenters, for staff, are in order now before public comment on this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Ms. Brier, thank you so much for such a thoughtful presentation. Could I, I know we've talked about this innumerable times, but can you affirm for, you know, there, as I think you know, there was some unfortunate misinformation that was spread in the spring to the effect that this facility would provide overnight shelter. Could you clarify again for the community the intent and whether there will be any overnight shelter on this site?
Yes, the Action Center doesn't provide sheltering services, and that was never our intention for this location. It will not be a shelter. It will not be providing overnight housing of any kind.
Wonderful, thank you. One of the things we've also talked about is the hours of operation. I know that you're juggling, as you just sort of laid out, eight, nine, 10 different sort of partners, and with a couple, you know, we've talked about the possibility that Red Rocks could provide, for instance, you know, evening classes for a couple of people. One of the things we also talked about that I've confirmed from two different volunteers is that the Boys and Girls Club operated in Emory for over a decade and went up until 8:00 p.m. every weekday evening during school year. So there is a long history of evening activities happening in that building. That being said, can you, one of the things we've talked about is providing a good, signing a good neighbor agreement with the neighbors. Can you speak to your intent on that, what you see as when you'll be able to sort of address the hours question down the road, and just generally how neighbors could, should expect to work with the Action Center if they do have any concerns that come up?
Thank you for the question. I'm very happy to work on a good neighbors agreement with the neighbors. I've been very happy to be engaged in conversations with the neighbors as we've been having community meetings in the last bunch of months. I've heard a lot of concerns. I've heard a lot of valid concerns and have been listening carefully, and we pride ourselves on being good neighbors in our current location, and we very much intend to be very good neighbors if we are to move to Emory. And so I have no problem at all signing a good neighbors agreement, which obviously I will work with the community to create, so happy to do that. In terms of the hours, I do think that it's premature for me to offer particular hours. There are a number of organizations who we'll be working with, some of whom I know intend to have some late afternoon, evening classes. Others, I don't know yet what they're hoping to do. But as you said, we could imagine having classes in the evening for adults inside the school. We could imagine having basketball practice happening at the school. Nothing disruptive, nothing loud, things happening inside the building. So I can't speak exactly to the hours and would need to get to the point where all of the partner organizations are locked in and we've had time to work through those kinds of details, and happy to share them as soon as I have more information.
Great, but just to a handful of folks who have asked this question, in terms of folks who are worried about noise or disruption after 7:00 or 8:00 p.m., can you assure the community that the Action Center is committed to being a good neighbor and there won't be like disruptive, loud noise happening after those hours?
Yes, I can speak to that and assure the community that we will do our very best to not have any kind of disturbance in any hour that would be disturbing community members. So we will work on that together and determine what that is. That is not our intention to have big, loud activities happening. Things that are happening will be inside the building, and I imagine they'll be pretty quiet because those are some big, thick walls.
Yep.
So that's our intention.
That's certainly my expectation as well. One other thing we've also talked about, I know some folks have, even though there will be no overnight sheltering, we're going to make sure, we're going to do a belt and suspenders approach to have language that makes that absolutely airtight in the final ordinance. There is the question of whether there might be folks, some folks in the community that are hanging around or loitering after hours. I know that you've talked about, you know, making sure that there's security on the premises and working with the city. Can you speak to that briefly?
I can speak to that. The Action Center currently has a security organization working with us, and that organization moves people on during the day when they're loitering. We also have cameras around the building and have the ability to move people on in the evening if that is happening. I can't guarantee, obviously, there won't be any homelessness in our community. That's something that already exists, and that does happen. The Action Center won't cause that, but the Action Center will be there to respond and to support community. I am not expecting that to be a big issue. On our current campus, that is not an issue. We have security. People are not sleeping on the location, at the location. We move people on if they are sort of camping out on our site, and we will continue to do that.
Wonderful, and one final question. It's already been alluded to, our plans to sort of table some of this stuff to a special meeting as early, assuming the injunction is lifted later this week. There are folks that might ask, why the urgency? There's a really good reason for that. Could you speak to that?
The Action Center is hoping to access new market tax credits to help us finance the renovation of the building while we continue to raise the money in our capital campaign and bring in pledges that are spanning several years. And so we need the new market tax credit loan. Those new market tax credits expire at the end of this year, and so in order to access those tax credits, we would need to go to closing on the property before the end of the year. The new market tax credits, in addition to giving us financing for the building, also give us $3 million towards the renovations, part of the loan that's forgiven at the end of the loan. So a value of 20% of the loan, $3 million, would go into the project. So that, of course, is an important $3 million to us to be able to renovate those spaces that I showed you in the slides so that we can create the beautiful grocery, the market, the family zone. So those are really important dollars to us, so we are hoping to get to the finish line by the end of this year.
So, long story short, if we don't pass this ordinance right soon, that money potentially goes away, that resource.
Yes, that's at high risk.
Yes, understood. Ms. Brier, I just want to thank you again. I mean, it's been a long road. You've had, you and your team have held three different town halls at Emory in July, in August, and September. You came and spoke at our Ward III meeting, you've spoken at other Ward meetings. You and your team have done a lot of outreach and done a lot of engagement with our constituents and the neighbors, and really, I think, made a lot of spaces available to incorporate feedback and sort of what this vision and this campus will be. I'll speak a little bit later to some of my thoughts about the vision you've laid out, which are extremely positive, but I just want to say thank you to you and your team for all the work you've done to be so thoughtful about getting feedback from and communicating and being responsive to Ward III residents.
Thank you.
Counselor Nystrom.
As expected, Counselor Lowe asked most of the questions I wanted to ask, but I wanted to, again, thank you for the presentation. I guess just to clarify some of the questions that I've been receiving were also along the lines of security and that type of thing. Will there be fencing around the school once the remodel is completed? Is that anticipated?
I don't anticipate putting new fencing in. That isn't part of the current, the current plan. There will be some additional, what's it called, landscaping to kind of create privacy between us and neighbors, and I think there's one fence we're helping to kind of rebuild that belongs to a neighbor, but there isn't going to be wraparound fencing around the campus.
Okay, and the security that is in place today at the current Action Center, you're going to be extending that at the new location. Is that a 24/7 security operation?
We have 24/7 monitoring. We do not have 24/7 people on the campus. So we have a lot of cameras, lighting, special lighting. We've had in the past cameras that we can speak through to help move people on. We have alerts, you know, from the police if something's happening on the campus, and we have team members that live nearby and come, but we don't have 24-hour people on site.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Ryan, and then Counselor Mayor Garo.
Thank you again for the presentation. Oh, there goes my chair. You know, one of the things that the community was interested in, and I think you guys delivered, was the community meetings beyond the ones that Counselor Lowe just mentioned. I know that you've met in people's living rooms and such, and you said, you know, "We listen very carefully." I wonder if you could share some of the things that you learned in those conversations that you're now trying to incorporate to meet those concerns or issues that the community raised during all of your outreach?
I think a lot of them have sort of surfaced in the initial questions. So there have been concerns about security. There have been some concerns about traffic flow. So there was a traffic study that came out very favorably. So we've been thinking about traffic flow, and those will be, you know, that we know that the traffic will be steady but not sort of clumped in the school hours like it had been, obviously, when it was a school. We're not, the traffic study suggested it would not be a disruption to the community, so we were very happy to hear that. We've been sharing that. Certainly, the security concerns came up. There were conversations about hours of operation and noise, and we heard a lot of really positive feedback as well in the community meetings, and people who were really excited about the resources that we're bringing asked about how they could be involved. Would there be opportunity for further conversation about additional? Would there be opportunity for further conversation about additional services? And so we listened to those and some really interesting ideas have come up in those conversations. And we have made a commitment to have, you know, those community meetings are just the beginning. We want to continue to be open to community conversation, to feedback. And I think that's part of what we're excited to build in the neighbor agreement, the good neighbor agreement, is opportunities, and I may not have fully addressed that question, for community members to know exactly how they can get in touch with us if something doesn't feel right. If things aren't going well, we will have avenues that are in that agreement that tell people exactly who to get in touch with, how to get in touch with us, when we're, you know, where to find us easily and when we can sit down and have conversations, what the format will be for those conversations and how we'll work to agreement.
Oh, thank you. And I was hoping maybe you could share some, you know, the vision certainly expanded greatly. I mean, it went from something terrific to something incredible, hopefully, when it comes to be. I wonder if you could share some more about the way that the community at large can participate in some of the activities? I mean, do I need to, you know, I'm blessed that, currently, I don't need to go to the Action Center for food. But, you know, are there services or things that, you know, for example, the gym or having kids participate in different activities? Are there things that we say, well, I don't need those services, but yet it's still an asset even for the community at large? Can you address some of those things as well? Because I think you really touched on so many of the other things already.
Yeah, I think, I thank you for asking that question. I do think a lot of times people are thinking, well, I'm not someone who goes to the Action Center, so I can't see myself using this space. And we are very much wanting this to be a center for the whole community. And so we're thinking about the kinds of things that everybody could benefit from. Parenting classes, you know, that's not something that only one group of people needs. We're, you know, anyone who's a parent, whether a grandparent becoming a parent again or another adult taking on the responsibility of kids or your own kids, that's support that we all need. So those sorts of things. Cooking classes, nutrition classes, financial planning classes, tax help. We're excited to maybe have art classes happening in the building. So definitely lots of services that are designed to help people in the community who need the help and need support and make sure that those services are easy to find and accessible. But we also think this is going to be a space that people will be surprised has something for them as well, whether it's the athletics or other kinds of classes happening there.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Counselor Maye Agarwal.
I think most of the questions have been largely answered at this point, so I don't need to feed a fed horse, as Counselor Lowe often says. I do really want to thank you for your amount of work. You know, there's been a lot of Ward 2 residents who have given feedback about some of the community meetings that they've gotten to go to that you all have been hosting and are pretty excited to see the expansion of services. I think I have the same question on the other side, which is how do we help people get involved as you all are trying to make this big move and big transition? I know signing up to volunteer is pretty easy, but this is going to be sort of maybe different kinds of needs. Are there ways that the community can be supportive?
Yes, please. Lots of different ways to be supportive. We're just beginning to think about some of the ways, if we are, to make this move. How are we going to do it? What kinds of helps do we need, help do we need to do that affordably? What kinds of goods and services do we need donated so that we can, you know, have furniture in the space that makes the space come alive and serve the purposes we need? We know we're going to need more volunteers in the space, helping people to navigate the space. We know we're going to need volunteers to help us in that planning and the transition planning. So there's all kinds of ways to be involved and we're still a little early in that kind of thinking, given that we don't have the building yet. But we will be definitely posting on our website. We'll have more community meetings asking for that kind of support and we're grateful for the question. Obviously, we're still raising money. So if anyone's really excited about the vision and has that kind of means and is interested in supporting, we would love to talk to folks about that. It is a tough time for nonprofits in the community. So at the same time that we have this very ambitious plan, we're also struggling to meet increased food insecurity and we're doing so with many fewer resources than we've ever had to do that. So you all probably know the USDA cut the federal food program in half. And so we used to get really bountiful amounts of protein from Food Bank of the Rockies and that really helped us to meet community needs. That's no longer the case. So donations of food, donations of dollars that help us to buy food, that's a really big thing on our mind right now with the SNAP, new SNAP requirements as well as SNAP being frozen. And a lot of people who are just needing help for the first time. So we want you to help us think about the future and we also really love it if you can help us today because we are facing unprecedented need in community and unfortunately, we don't see that changing in the near future.
Thank you for, thank you for that answer and thank you for your continued work in the community.
Thank you.
Counselor Neistrom, did you have your hand up again? Okay.
Yes, sorry, I forgot. I had one other, not really a question, it's already been clarified for me, but just for the record, my understanding from a transportation standpoint, which is another repeated question that I got, was that there's bus stops, obviously, on Wadsworth and Mississippi. But I understand that RTD also, you have passes that are available to people if they can get a round trip pass to pick up groceries and that type of thing. But my understanding also is that 80% of the people that come to the Action Center currently do have vehicles or they carpool. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's true. When people come to the Action Center, they're often leaving with a lot of clothing and a lot of groceries. It's hard sometimes to take public transit. So we do have a very mixed way of transporting, people transporting to the Action Center as a result. So we expect that will likely continue.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lowe.
I have just one or two other questions for staff, but if any other counselor has first round of questions or a question for Ms. Breyer, I defer to them. Okay, if not, I can ask staff a question. Thank you again, Ms. Breyer.
Thank you.
So just before we move into public comment briefly, you know, one, another, there has been a bit of misinformation circulating on this topic in the community over the last six months. Maybe we could just, one other, one other thing that's come up. It's been, the question has been raised about why it is that Lakewood is authorized to purchase this at a price that is, you know, the entire Emory complex for $4 million. My understanding is there's a long, long history of the school district having a school disposition property for cities that recognizes the benefits of disposing of properties in a manner that's in the public interest. Mr. Parker, maybe you could speak to that history?
Absolutely. I've looked into some of the past transfers from the school district to the city and I would say the vast majority, if not all, have been, you know, at a significant discount where the school district is providing property to the city for community use. In fact, looking at just the neighboring property, the Link Rec Center, that was given, basically given to the city by the school district for $0 in 1994. In fact, the school district actually paid for some of the demolition of the existing building before giving that property. And there are a number of other examples. So it's, it's very common and in fact, it's rare that the school district charges us full freight for property that we're going to be using for a community purpose.
Great. And just on that, while we're on that topic, so the points been raised, we're purchasing this for $4 million, we're selling Emory for $1 million to enable this amazing, the amazing vision that Ms. Breyer just laid out. But just to be clear, we're selling 9.8 acres of a 17-acre property. We retain over seven acres of really prime, open space for municipal use on this parcel, correct?
Well, and actually, yes. The property that we're keeping, the fields on the east side of the existing Emory school site represent the $3 million of that $4 million. So we're paying, in fact, even for that $3 million, we're paying under what our normal value is for parkland dedication for those 3 million acres, or, sorry, for those seven acres. And then for the property with the Emory school site, we're paying the school district $1 million and then, you know, selling it for a million.
So even, basically, even if you take out the Emory thing, just the roughly seven acres that we're retaining is a, it's a good deal for the city in terms of keeping that land?
We're getting a good deal on the fields and, yeah, we're coming out clean, the same amount, we're selling for the same amount that we're buying for the building.
Great, thank you. Just one other question since you did raise the Link Center. One neighbor raised the question of, well, what happens if there's a future effort to connect the Link, two questions, to connect the Link Center parking lot with the Action Center parking lot? There's no plans to do that and can, you just confirmed that if there was, I mean, that's not on anyone's radar, I understand it. And the city would definitely come back to council and advise us of that before there would be a plan to connect those two lots, right?
Absolutely. Neither the Action Center nor the city has any interest in putting, you know, a vehicle connection between those two lots.
Great. Finally, Ms. Breyer already referenced this, but some of the neighbors have raised, this might be a more Public Works question, so let me know. I mean, I can frankly speak to it because I've looked at the study in some depth myself, but a lot of the neighbors have raised the question of, you know, what this will do to traffic. Could you just, there's a traffic study that goes into that question with considerable depth over the next 20 years. Do you want to briefly speak to that?
That may be outside of my expert area of expertise.
Okay, if, I mean, I can confirm that having reviewed the traffic study, it was extremely reassuring for folks that have that, but if our Public Works Director wants to speak to that?
Yes, certainly. Yes, staff has reviewed the traffic study and we're in concurrence with the results and the recommendations in there. And we'll continue to observe traffic as the center opens and continue to monitor that. But at this time, we're in concurrence with those outcomes and the study recommendations.
And I mean, the gist is that there's more than enough capacity to handle the expected traffic.
Absolutely.
I will just, while I've got you, for five seconds, voice my view that it's important that that traffic light retained, be retained into the future. It's something that we've heard a lot about from the residents, that they want to make sure that traffic light exists at that intersection, that, you know, as traffic does increase from people using that center, that that traffic light is serving a really valuable need for the folks who live in that community, especially along the cul-de-sac.
Yes, so our intent would be, that's what we've heard from the community as well as staff. And what our intent is, is that there are national warrants for traffic signals to either be installed or to be removed. And once the center is up and running, we can look at that. There's based on traffic volumes as well as pedestrian volumes. So there's a series of warrants that we can look at to ensure that that's still appropriate to keep the signal up there.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I have one more question for staff, but it's associated with the amendments. We're going to motion later, so we, I'll hold on that. Thank you, Council, for your patience and I know, I know I had a lot of questions. They reflect a lot of questions that we've gotten from the community over the last six months and I've been very impressed by the degree to which both the Action Center and our staff has responded and processed and been responsive to the many, many questions that we've been raising that have come from residents to try to do our best to make sure that everyone is comfortable as possible with this plan moving forward. So thanks so much for the due diligence, both to the Action Center staff and to the city staff.
Counselor Ryan.
I'm very sorry. Could I ask you a question?
I should have stayed.
No, 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 that's all right. So, and I think with your response to Counselor Lowe's questions, you probably have gotten this over the, over the line, if you will, but just for the folks who aren't as familiar with some of the jargon, can you explain what a traffic warrant would be? Because we think of warrants in different contexts these days.
Yes, thank you. We often do use too much jargon. So warrants would be like criteria, if you will, so that, for instance, a community just couldn't put it up automatically at any given location. There are, again, national criteria by which cities and counties and even the federal government are encouraged to use, based on national standards established by traffic engineers, to put up to before a signal would be installed or before it would be removed. And some of those are things like, again, traffic volumes, both on the side streets, how much traffic is coming into an intersection, as well as pedestrian volumes, things like proximity to schools and proximity to railroad crossings. So there's a series of eight or nine of those, or, excuse me, I think that goes up to 12 of them, that we would look at before you would install a particular signal or remove it.
And so to use one of Counselor Lowe's phrases, just to put a bow on this, the idea would be that even though the traffic study says that it's okay to remove the light, the city's not in any hurry to do so and is planning on leaving it up right now to be able to monitor not only the traffic on the roads, but also pedestrians and other means of transportation.
That's exactly correct. As Ms. Breyer just talked about, there is not only a certain amount of vehicular traffic planned to come to the site, but also most likely, more than likely, a lot of pedestrian traffic. So we want to see the center opened and then evaluate the, both traffic and pedestrian volumes before any further decision is made.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thank you. That was our last hand up. All right, thank you, Council, for all of your very thorough questions. And with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. I do have sheets up here for everybody that has signed up so far. If anyone came into the room after and would like to speak on this topic, if you'll put your hand up, Ms. Breyer, please come up here and get signed in and we'll make sure we've got you in the lineup as well. So again, I'll ask if our first speaker can come up here to the lectern and then I'll name a couple others that can be hanging out over here waiting in the wings. And first up, we have Betty Boyd, then Joan Jacobson, and then Lydon Spurling.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and counselors. My name is Betty Boyd and I live in Ward 4 in the Green Mountain area. When we first moved to Lakewood in 1974, it didn't take long for me to get involved with the faith community at the Lutheran Church of the Resurrection, which was down the street from what was then Dunston Middle, not Dunston, excuse me, O'Connell Middle School. And part of that involvement was through Church Women United, which a few years earlier in 19, let's say 1968, was one of the founding partners of the Jeffco Action Center. Since then, the Action Center has been helping members of the Lakewood and Jeffco community with food and so many other services, as you heard in Pam Breyer's testimony. They have continually innovated and changed to meet the changing needs of a changing community. Today, the Action Center sees over 60,000 family units per year. The mission, I will repeat, is to provide an immediate and compassionate response to those experiencing hardship and offer the resources needed to stabilize lives and promote pathways to lasting change. Times certainly have changed. Since 2009, the Action Center has seen a 300% increase in requests for assistance. And to address these needs, they must find more efficient ways to provide services. As a former board member of the Action Center, I was invited to the site and for a tour and to hear the vision and plans for the future. And it blew me away. It was just so exciting. Today, the access to services is far more complicated than it ever was before. And the prospect of having a one-stop shopping facility like there, like is being provided, is so important. And it will provide a community resource for the neighborhood for meetings and various other needs. So at this point, I also, with Together Colorado, which you've heard from on some other issues before, but I do urge your support for the city purchase of the Emory property and support for the other two items that you discussed. Thank you.
Joan Jacobson. Joan Jacobson.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, councilors. My name is Joan Jacobson. I live at 1836 Dover Street in Ward Two, and I support the Action Center and I will make two separate points in support of the sale of the Emory School to the Action Center. First, I want to address concern about property values and if they're a good neighbor. I moved from Ward Four to Ward Two in 2007, when the Action Center had already been in its current location for many years. I currently live a five-minute walk from the current location, which I know because I volunteered there for 10 years and I walked every time. Earlier, when we had sold our house on Green Mountain and bought near the Action Center in historic Lakewood, property values on a per-square-foot basis were actually higher near the Action Center than they were up on Green Mountain. Since then, the Action Center has doubled in size and my home's value has increased a lot. The second point I want to make, and I think far more important, is that I'm a Christian who believes that Jesus calls us to care for our neighbors. But even if you are of another faith or spiritual or have no faith at all, I believe everybody wants to do the right thing by our neighbors. Be kind, lend a helping hand. The Emory Building will allow the Action Center to provide so many more and better services, as we just saw in Pam Brier's presentation. And they will lift up our neighbors. And that is something all Lakewood citizens should be able to give behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladon Spurling, then Matthew Sweeney, and then Shirley Bradley, Bradzby.
Hello, I'm Ladon Spurling. I'm a resident of Ward Four and I'm a former board president of the Action Center. I've been involved with the Action Center since 2006 and things have changed a lot. In the past five to eight years, the Action Center Board realized providing services for our unhoused neighbors was not an area of strength for us. In fact, we made the tough decision to close down our shelter. We partnered with Recovery Works, an organization that excels at helping people, people who are unhoused, to fill the gap we were leaving behind. COVID delayed our plans for a bit, but now the Action Center is ready to focus on what the Action Center Board approved in early 2020, preventing homelessness. This is where the Action Center really excels and makes a difference. In 2021, the Action Center joined the Colorado Family Resource Association. We are the only member of this statewide association in Jefferson County. As a family resource center, the Action Center collaborates with Jeffco Public Schools to provide services to families and help families achieve their goals and thrive. The Emory location is an opportunity for multiple organizations to collaborate together to provide needed services so those in need do not, need to visit multiple locations for services. I encourage all of you to support this. Thank you so much, Mayor and council members.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Matthew Sweeney, Ward Four. I seldom come to city council to speak. In fact, this is my first time doing so. I did prepare a script, but I've never been good at preparing a script, so I apologize for this coming across as disorganized and I especially apologize to this stenographer, if one exists, for the stream of consciousness that's going to come out here. Now, I don't come to city council, I don't participate in a lot of these because my day-to-day is consumed with a six-year-old, with work, and with our current economic and social environment right now. So I'm admitting that with a bit of shame, but also saying that because there are many instances in my life where I feel disempowered and I don't speak out in a lot of spaces. And I can tell you that if a project manager or a developer knocked on my door, I wouldn't answer it. If they called or emailed me about input from the community, I likely wouldn't say anything about it. So what's compelled me to come here today and speak about this? Well, I had the opportunity to volunteer for the Action Center a couple of times. And in doing so, I understood the crucial impact that has been enumerated here by yourselves and so many others. So I won't share more about the importance of this project, the importance of the Action Center or other partners like Cross Purpose and what they do for our community, but instead I just want to offer a couple of other perspectives for you, specifically around what other community input might be that is not added right here or that you haven't heard right now. So in some instances where people are directly affected so closely, they might be the loudest voices up in front of you. And there are softer voices that have an interest in this project and support this project, like mine, that don't often come here. So I've come here to say this to you right now, A, as a challenge to myself, to not be disempowered and to say something for how I feel, but also to represent knowing that oftentimes when I'm not answering the door or, or those emails or those phone calls, that I still have an interest in this work. And it's important right now, especially with everything that's happening, that activities for economic stabilization are prioritized with the urgency that is being moved on in this project. So I want to commend y'all and the staff and the Action Center for the leadership that it's taking right now in this tough climate to do something that's important for the community and that is something that is led by community members and a coalition of community organizations to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley Bradzby, then Lori Rubio, then Larry Lance.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Bradzby, 241 Youngfield Drive. I have been a volunteer for the Action Center since 1968. In fact, in 1968, we bought our first building. Well, I say we bought our first building, we collected enough green stamps to get money to give to the Jefferson County Schools and get one of their temporary buildings. And when that came around the corner on a flatbed into Lakewood Methodist property, we all stood around and cheered. What a great day that was. But you know, in those days, we would take our mending or our knitting to kind of fill the time in between clients. That's a far cry from, as we have heard, 610,000-plus families every year that come to the Action Center. It's, it's been a great ride and it's been such fun to be involved in an organization that feels so much for others in our community. I've watched the needs grow in Lakewood and the Action Center grow to help meet those needs. Everyone in Lakewood needs the opportunity to become a self-sufficient citizen. Many need just a little help, some need much more, and the Emory Center would provide a lot of those services that they can't, we can't give at the current location. The Emory Building would be able to house a variety of programs, all under one roof, as you saw, and what a great concept that is. What a great collaborative effort. I, I can't believe the hours that have been spent on trying to work with this and see how can we really use all our resources to help our neighbors here in Lakewood. The Action Center has worked hard year after year to help stabilize lives and get people on that road to self-sufficiency. This is indeed the next step so people can easily find the resources needed to help them become good Lakewood citizens. As a member of Holy Shepherd Lutheran Church, I know that my purpose in life is to pass God's love onto other people. I can think of no better way to do this than taking this next step that will help thousands of families every year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm a Jefferson County resident of more than 25 years and also a previous employee at St. Anthony Medical Campus for many years in Lakewood. It was there that I first learned about the Action Center and the breadth of their services and reach across our community, not only with patients, volunteers at the hospital, and actual full-time employees of the medical campus who, from time to time, needed extra help from the Action Center to make ends meet, even with full-time jobs. And that was many years ago, and now with the affordable housing issue and all of the other issues that are facing our residents, the Action Center services are all the more important. As a longtime resident of this community, I'm grateful for the critically important supportive services the Action Center provides to Lakewood and Jeffco families. After learning about the Action Center from the hospital, I began volunteering for many years and I am grateful to now be serving as the Action Center Board Chair. Reimagining Emory as a comprehensive community service hub led by the Action Center will make our community stronger and more resilient by providing the services our residents need for self-sufficiency, health, and well-being. I strongly support the sale of Emory to the Action Center and am grateful for its vision and partnership with nonprofits in the workforce development, health, and enrichment program spaces to help our residents and communities thrive. Please consider supporting the tens of thousands of residents who will benefit from the sale of Emory to the Action Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Lance, then Shawna McGuckin, McGuckill, and then Jim Freeman.
Hello, Mayor Strom, council members. My name is Larry Lance. I'm a 28-year resident of Jefferson County. I'm a retired businessman in the community, actually office right over here in Union Boulevard for years, and, and practiced in real estate. I have so much fondness for Pam Brier and all the leadership team of the Action Center and, and what they're doing and her vision for expanding the Action Center. And also for the city staff to help us get to the point where we're at. I've provided some guidance along the way from a real estate perspective. I really have two points to make. One is the real estate perspective. As a 43-year practicing real estate investor, I can tell you, to, to see a current community facility, an asset, that served the community well over the years, to be repurposed into a new community asset. And we all can dream and, or envision other uses of that asset that probably some real estate developer would come along at some point in time and want to try to do, but this is a perfect, I mean, from a real estate perspective, it's a no-brainer. From a community perspective, my other point is I, I've been a, a supporter of the Action Center now for a couple decades. I volunteered. I have made a considerable capital pledge towards this project being completed. And again, I can't help it, but from my real estate background, everything's starting, is everything's lining up and it's so critical to keep this ball moving. And it's going to be so important for the community to have this new facility repurposed for the Action Center and all their partners. With that, I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. My name is Shawna McGuckin. I'm the Director of Strategic Partnerships with the Family Resource Center Association. Thank you for having this opportunity to speak here. I'm here to support the Action Center's purchase of Emory Elementary School from Lakewood. The Action Center is a longstanding member of the Family Resource Center Association in providing the vital family prevention and supportive services that they do to help families thrive. The Action Center is the trusted community nonprofit that families rely on to bring family supportive services to Lakewood that are evidence-based and evidence-informed. They've been doing this year after year and it's exciting for them to be able to expand this into a new campus. Their plan for collaborative programming will take family resource centers to a whole new level in Colorado. So the community impact and the support that the Action Center is planning will really place Lakewood at the forefront of really truly innovative work. So you all should be very proud to have the Action Center here as your partner. So this model that the Action Center is planning really is going to be a shining beacon throughout Colorado for the model for family resource centers. So again, Lakewood should be very proud that the Action Center is bringing true community collaborative programming to your families. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Freeman. Then we have Beth Behrens and then Jules Burke.
Yes, my name is Jim Freeman. It's, I'm a Ward Five person. This month, we became Lakewood residents 49 years ago and the Action Center 50 years plus, and Lakewood was pretty young then, too. And I came, I came here to support the purchase of Emory Elementary because it sounds like a no-brainer to me. And so I appreciate all the work that council has done, staff has done, and Jeffco, wait, wait, change that name, the Action Center has done, to put this whole thing together. And I hope and pray that it is done within that timeframe of December 31st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. And it looks like I'm the only person from Ward Three that's here tonight, which kind of hits the question on contact and notification. I wrote up a whole thing and, and kind of going back and forth, but let's get at it. First, I wish we had had better communication at the beginning, when you guys started to look at the schools. The Ward Three, those of us that live within spitting distance of Emory, should have been at the table. We should have been allowed to provide our opinion, what we would like to see, what they're going to do, we should have had some input. Why there wasn't more direct communication from the city, we'll never know. I asked for it at a Ward Three meeting in May and what we got were flyers placed in our mailboxes from the Action Center. They're not going to come. My neighbors are not going to come. They weren't. They're not here today. Going forward, I guess that's where I'm at right now, going forward, we need a place at the table. If they're bringing in all their partners, how come the neighborhood has not been included as a partner? We're told, this is what we're going to We're told, this is what we're going to do. This is who we're bringing in, but we haven't had the input. We haven't been allowed to be a partner, to be at the table. You guys, we elected you to be our voice. Our, my voice has not been heard. The voices of the neighbors I've talked to has not been heard. So going forward, all I'm really asking is let us be at the table with your partners to come up with what are good hours, what kind of concerts you're going to have, who you're going to rent to. Because we've had this before with the Link and how that happened. So all I'm asking right now is give us a place at the table so our voices are heard. Because you're not my voice, and I don't know who you're listening to, but you haven't been listening to me. Whose voice is more important? Thank you.
Thank you. Jules Burke, then Anna Hannel, then Stephanie Hewitt.
Hello. Sorry, I'm very shy to speak in front of all of you, but I got encouraged by some friends from Community Garden to come and share my voice about this issue. My name is Jules Burke, and I am a member of Ward Three. I actually live right across the street from Emory Elementary. I've been there since 2021 when my wife and I bought our house. We've really felt so lucky to be part of this community, and we're really invested in Lakewood's future. I would really like to see the school building put to good use. It's been empty for so long, and it's been very sad to see it so empty. The rec center, the baseball and soccer fields, and the skate park really make this a perfect community gathering area. The area is always full of neighbors who are walking their dogs and kids playing sports. People ride their horses through the park, so it's a really beautiful part of Lakewood. I just want to ensure that our community has access to more resources within our neighborhood. The Action Center would provide food assistance, health and wellness services, and family coaching, and they also help people navigate the many barriers to receiving the support they deserve. I really think it's extremely important that we take care of our community now and also in the future. And I want to see a community center that is vibrant. I want to see the school building used and also kept as a gathering place where we can keep supporting each other. And then to go off script, I just want to echo what some other people have said about feeling really disempowered in my daily life. I was just, like I said, encouraged by some friends to come and share. And I've just felt so encouraged to see, like, this is what we're doing in our community. I think it would be incredible for the people around me. I have several neighbors who are seniors on fixed incomes, who are taking care of grandchildren. I just think there's not a lot of resources within walking distance and accessible areas for my neighbors, so I would really love to see this happen and come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Hannel.
Hello, I'm Anna Hannel. I do live in Ward Three. I'm just down the hill from Emory, like, less than a mile where Weir Gulch is, at the bottom of the hill. And I have two little kids, and it's past my bedtime, so sorry if I ramble. Normally, we're in bed by night. I really was excited when I heard about this project. I subscribed to the Ward Three reminders, so I was able to go to the Ward Three meeting in September and got a chance to go into the school and see what the Action Center wants to do, and was really excited to see that they also wanted to partner with healthcare organizations, mental health support, workforce development. I'm pushing for a coffee shop for the tired moms of Lakewood. Dirt Coffee has an excellent program to help neurodivergent folks with job training. Would love to see that in our neighborhood. I think it's a great reuse of the space. It's, it was a school. Enrollment is dropping. It's not going to be a school again. I have kids in elementary school. We hear this all the time. Enrollment is dropping. And bond money put improvements into that building just before it closed. So I was disappointed at first, like, oh, they closed a school, and they just poured some money into improving it. And this would be a great reuse of a building that our taxpayer dollars recently paid to work on. I don't think the building should be sitting vacant. I know some neighbors have concerns about, would it attract folks who are, you know, homeless and cause problems? I think a vacant building would do more to cause problems than a building that's being used to help our community. And I, like I said, I was at that ward meeting. Unfortunately, there were some folks who were kind of loud and angry there, and I'm not surprised there's a legal challenge, but I am disappointed because I don't think that represents Ward Three. We don't always get a chance to come to all the meetings, but many of my neighbors, I know folks, many of my neighbors know folks who use the Action Center. I do think we're going to have more people who are going to need resources, who can pay rent, but then can't get food for their families, can't get clothing. I volunteered a couple times at the Action Center years ago when they started their clothing bank because I just wanted to see what it looked like. And it was a neat idea. I don't work with the Action Center otherwise, but I do think that our neighborhood could really use this, and I think it's a great reuse of the building. And I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Hewitt, then Kathy Hatfield, and then James Ginsburg.
Mayor Strom, Council members, thank you for having us all here tonight. I'm Stephanie Hewitt. I am the Director of Community Partnerships with Cross Purpose. You've heard our name a few times tonight already, and I just want to tell you a little bit about who we are because that'll help you understand why we're so excited to join the Action Center in this tremendous project. Cross Purpose is a workforce and community development program. We have been a nonprofit since 2012. And that whole nonprofit started with a conversation with two neighbors sitting on their porches in Five Points. And in that conversation, one woman, who had been working at Walmart for about 10 years, could not get her income to a place where she could only work one job and be able to support her family. She had to work multiple jobs. And our now CEO, Jason Jan, said, what if? What if we could help you earn a livable wage within a year? And she looked at him and laughed and said, do you mean legally? But it worked because we had what Cross Purpose believes is one of our most endearing values. And that is that we don't believe any significant change happens without a significant relationship. So right now, we have 13 different industries, or 13 different skill tracks in seven different industries. And we are watching our neighbors move from generational poverty to generational wealth. By 2026, we will see 2,000 graduates from our program. And just a few numbers that I pride from a few of my teammates today. We will see 55 of our alumni purchase their own homes in the next year. We will see 22 business and nonprofits launched in the next five years. We have an 87% rate of people that are staying within the same job that they got through their certification with Cross Purpose. So enough about Cross Purpose. We are so thrilled to be a part of the Emory Project because no significant change happens without a significant relationship. And the Action Center knows that at the core of their being. That's why they've done the nonprofit that they've done for all the years that they've done it. And that's why they're spearheading a remarkable program that will unite community partners all around the city to do what our neighbors need desperately, which is to not have to run all over the place in order to get your needs met. They can come to this place and be served by community partners who genuinely see them, want them to feel like they belong, and really care for them.
Your time is expired.
So we cannot be more happy to join you. Thanks.
Thank you. James Ginsburg, then Ben David Hensley, and then Bradley Bruce. Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy Hatfield. Yep.
Good evening. I am a resident of Ward Three. I have been a resident for 46 years. 25 of those years were spent in the Emory neighborhood. It was then O'Connell, and my kids went to school there and were very active in the Link and so on. I am passionate about the city of Lakewood. I've lived here not only those 45 years, but I grew up in Ward Two. So Lakewood has been home, and I'm very passionate about Lakewood. I'm passionate about the Action Center. And I really applaud the city of Lakewood for the vision that you have put together to bring all the services that we need in the areas that we see that are so important, whether they're economic issues, poverty, and food and so on, and certainly housing. So thank you for that. But also extraordinary visions that the Action Center have taken because they are creating amazing, amazing model for what we can see as something that will be very important in our community. As Director of Operation at one time for the Action Center, I saw many, many people and was able to talk to them. And I have heard stories that people are afraid of who is going to be showing up at Emory. And so I thought I'd share a couple stories of some people that I met over the years. One was an individual who lived in southern Jefferson County. He was working in the aerospace industry, and he was diagnosed with a brain tumor. He was at the Action Center. He says, I have now lost my insurance. I have lost my job. I have lost my family because I lost my housing. And I'm here, I used to come, no, I, well, I used to come to the Action Center and give food. I gave to the Action Center. I never, ever thought that I would be here asking for help. He said, but the Action Center has helped me. I'm on my road to being able to get through the next few months. This is something that I never expected, and I am so grateful to the Action Center. The next person was a person that I met. We didn't have that wonderful grocery all the time. We, we had a window, and we had volunteers that packed boxes of food, and then they would hand the box of food over to an individual. So I was helping out one day because it was very crowded, and they, we needed help. And a man came up, and he said to me, can I have one of those? And he pointed to a pie crust, raw dough pie crust. And I said, well, of course. They were there for anyone to take. And as he walked back to where he was coming from, I began to say, no, no, no. I turned around, I grabbed some bananas and some protein bars and took it out to him. He was there feeding the raw pastry to three little kids under the age of five. And he looked at me with tears in his eyes, just like the previous man had, too. And he said,
Your time is up.
We haven't eaten for since yesterday.
Thank you. Mr. Ginsburg.
Mayor and City Council, I'm James Ginsburg. I'm Executive Director of Recovery Works, located at 14825 West Colfax in Lakewood. Since 68, the Action Center has been a part of the very fabric of the Lakewood and Jefferson County community. Over the last 57 years, this organization has filled a critical role in being a stabilizing presence in neighborhoods by helping to meet the needs of people with disabilities, single-parent households and families who can't meet all their basic needs, even while working full-time. As someone who has made referrals to the Action Center as well as collaborating on community-wide needs, I have seen a very well-run organization that judiciously utilizes their limited resources by incorporating an army of volunteers and leveraging donations to help meet growing needs that have well-outpaced their limited capacity. All their programming considers the needs and concerns of the neighbors in order to seamlessly integrate into the community. The acquisition of Emory Elementary and subsequent sell to the Action Center is a model of public, private, and nonprofit sector collaboration that should not only be supported but replicated. The city of Lakewood, Jefferson County, the school district, private business, and multiple nonprofits led by the Action Center are to be applauded for their innovation in working to meet a growing need in the community in the areas of hunger, homelessness, and employment instability. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben David Hensley.
Good evening. My name is Ben, and I live in Ward Two. Honorable Mayor and City Councilors, I pastor Lakewood United Methodist Church, just a few blocks from the Action Center. The Action Center is a vital part of our city's welfare safety net and a crucial partner in the fight that all of us are waging against the devastation of poverty in our community. It's particularly important to me this evening that I rise to represent the congregation who is crucial to the Action Center's existence. The Action Center didn't appear in a vacuum. It was the fruit of a combined passion of women, as you heard. But specifically, it was the combined passion of women of faith from many congregations across Lakewood, including my own. We at Lakewood UMC are proud of this part of our story because the Action Center wasn't always located at 8755 West 14th Avenue. In fact, the Action Center started its work in my church's parking lot. And it was birthed out of an earnest desire to live out the call contained in the innumerable commandments of the Hebrew Bible and the New Testament, to serve those in need. Now, there is some misinformation floating around in the conversation on this move. I'm sure all of you are shocked to hear that, especially originating from some of our favorite websites like Nextdoor and Lakewood Informer, either stating or implying that the Action Center's move will introduce homelessness services in a residential neighborhood or that this is some backroom deal designed to rob Jeffco taxpayers of the true value of the sale of this property. Neither of these narratives are true, nor have they been offered in good faith. The Action Center's mission and their work is far more focused on families who aren't homeless but are struggling to make ends meet, struggling to afford new clothes for their kids, struggling to keep the pantry stocked, struggling to pay rent, or struggling to connect to services that will help them get access to healthcare. And they are the gold standard. To echo Pam, we should keep this public asset, a public asset, that benefits our city. What this property is worth in dollars is meaningless compared to the numerous intangible ways that the Action Center's exciting vision for this space can benefit our city. And I also want to say that the truly reprehensible implication that this process somehow affected the ability of Evergreen High School to prevent a shooting months ago deserves public rebuke and ridicule, and so I offer it here for the record. This move to Emory Elementary places the Action Center more closely to the families they serve. It creates a resource that would not have been possible any other way. I strongly support it, and I urge all of you to approve this sale when you are legally allowed to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Bradley Bruce.
Hi, my name is Brad Bruce. I live in Ward Two, and I'm here to speak enthusiastically in support of selling Emory Elementary School to the Action Center to be used for Community Resource Center. I think it's really important that we have this conversation within the boundaries of the fact that this Friday, 41 million Americans will lose access to their SNAP benefits. That is almost 10%. One in every 10 Americans will lose access to desperately needed food. I grew up on SNAP benefits, then called food stamps. And that, and Community Resources, like the one that is planned to be utilized here at the old Emory building, is the only reason I was able to graduate high school. It's the only reason I was able to graduate with a Bachelor of Science degree. It's the only reason I was able to raise myself up by my bootstraps. And if I did not have access to SNAP benefits and I did not have access to Community Resource, like the one we're talking about here, I would probably be committing petty crime and living in Belmar Park. We unfortunately cannot rely on the federal government anymore. Even if a Democrat gets reelected in four years, if you guys think things are going to get better after that, I have a genocide in Gaza to sell you. Like, things are not going to get better. So many of my friends and loved ones are out of work right now, more than I have ever known ever since, look, when I was in high school. None of us needed jobs to survive. So I do want to also say I'm a member of the Lakewood Left. We're a mutual aid organization. We're out on Colfax every Friday. Many of you have been there. Those of you who have not been there, I would encourage you to come out there. We'll be there this Friday. But it is unfortunately getting busier and busier. SNAP benefits have not ended yet. SNAP benefits have not ended yet, and it is, last Friday was the busiest I've ever personally seen it. Things are getting incredibly worse. I do want to touch on what Pastor Ben just said about, you know, the profits or Jeffco taxpayers losing on money. Government does not exist to make a profit. You guys are here to give us services as constituents, you know? If our tax dollars can fund unlimited weapons and genocide in Palestine, if it can fund unlimited deportations here stateside, if we can go blow up Venezuelan boats all day, I don't see why we can't fund services here in our communities. This is ridiculous. I know there's some conversation about, like, transportation's not enough. You guys should talk to Brett Paglieri. He's our RTD Director. He's fantastic. I'm sure he would love to hear that people want the 76 bus to be more well-funded. I do also want to say that I've never seen public comment and Lakewood speak so overwhelmingly in support of a resolution, and I've been to a lot of these meetings, unfortunately. And so it's just crazy to me that a few people, a few bad actors, can stop something that would be so overwhelmingly positive for the 156,000 residents of the city. Finally, I'll just say, I don't know if it'll be Ms. McKinney Brown representing the city in this suit, but give 'em hell. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, that is the end of the list of signups that I have up here. Is there anybody else in the room that wanted to speak to this ordinance before we move on? Okay, so seeing none, we'll go ahead. We have clerks write it into the record. Why don't we go ahead and start with a motion?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2025-35 on second and final reading.
Second. Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second on the floor, and I would now open the floor up. Any council? Let's start with questions. I know we do have two amendments. Do we have any questions first? All right, seeing none. Thou who has an amendment shall raise thine hand. Counselor Ken Cruz, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would love to move to amend ordinance O-2025-35, Section 3. And this is to strike out the words "including language" with "the" and replacing with the words, and directs the city manager to ensure language is included within "the." The purpose of this amendment is to ensure that this property remains focused on community service and support for families, not for overnight shelter. You know, the language came through, collaboration with staff, you know, the city attorney, as well as the community. So yeah, I want to go ahead and move this forward. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on that amendment. Any hands, questions about the amendment? Seeing none. Counselor Ken Cruz.
Yes, I move to table the amendment until a virtual special meeting held on Wednesday, October 29th, 2025.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any conversation about the table? Okay, seeing none, please go ahead and cast your votes. That passes, 10 yeses and zero noes. Our next amendment?
Counselor Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, before I move this, let me ask my final question for staff that's related to this amendment. So Ms. McKinney Brown, we've had some conversations about how, well, the question has been asked, what would happen in the, I think it's safe to say based on the comments we've seen here tonight, hopefully extremely remote chance that the Action Center at some future point needed to sell this property, which we don't, certainly don't foresee. And I'm happy to direct this to Ms. Stanek if that's better. I know the city attorney's office is having a slightly busier week than usual, and that's maybe saying something. But could one of you just speak to the deed-restricted language the school district has on this property that ensures, even if the Action Center were to move to sell this at some future date, that it is still deed-restricted?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Lowe. The school district is going to be filing a restrictive covenant and deed restriction on this property, and that restrictive covenant and deed restriction outlines how that covenant can be removed in the future if the property fails to be used as a community services facility. In the event that happens, the school district could move to enforce its restriction, and it would require the owner, so either the Action Center or a successor entity that's operating a community service facility, would require them to pay the difference between the $1 million, which was the price for the center, and the fair market value at the time that it failed to be used as a community service facility. So one option, if it fails to be used as that, is that they would be required to pay the difference.
Got it. Okay, so we, Counselor Cruz and I wanted to offer an amendment, just belt and suspenders, just making that point explicit for folks in the community that have asked about this. So this amendment would be in two parts, and I move the following amendments. First of all, to insert a second recital clause that reads as follows. Whereas Jefferson County School District R-1 will record a restrictive covenant and deed restriction against the property, setting forth the limited permitted use of the property and the consequences of failing to use the property as a community service facility to assure this property is used to the benefit of families served by the Jefferson County School District R-1. And further, I would move to also add a clause at the end of Section 3, strike the period at the end of Section 3, insert comma, and both parties acknowledge the restrictive covenant and deed restriction recorded against the property by the Jefferson County School District R-1, setting forth the limited permitted use of the property and the consequences of failing to use the property as a community services facility or equivalent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any council questions? Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I think it feels very clear, but I just want to ensure that this amendment, combined with the other one, feels like clear to all the parties involved and that it is not something that fundamentally changes our agreement with the Action Center.
That's correct. So the Action Center has already been made aware that there's going to be a restrictive covenant and deed restriction outlining the use for this property, so that has been part of the transaction since the beginning.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other hands? Seeing none. Counselor Lowe.
I move to table this amendment until a virtual special meeting held on Wednesday, October 29th, 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any comments or questions about the amendment to table? All right, seeing none, please go ahead and cast your votes. That passes, 10 yeses and zero noes. So with that, do we have any other questions, or do I have any other amendments this evening? Those are the only two we know of. Okay, perfect. All right, Mayor Protem, we're ready to table.
Okay, I move to hold a virtual special meeting on Wednesday, October 29th, at 6:00 PM for the limited purpose of taking action on ordinances 2025-33.
Excuse me. You're one ahead of where we need to be.
I'm one ahead, I'm so sorry. One back tabling. I move to table the question until a virtual session meeting held on Wednesday, October 29th, 2025.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any hands up? Counselor Lowe.
You know, I had prepared to say something, but honestly, I think the room has spoken for me. I really just don't think I can add anything to the outpouring of support that we've seen from across Ward III, Lakewood and Jeffco, about the deeply inspiring vision for this campus and the urgent need for a co-located center with all of the amazing resources. I would just very briefly echo the vital importance of doing this and of, you know, the need to not make families shuffle around between seven or eight or nine different resource centers, but the idea of co-locating all these centers is really inspiring. I think this has been covered, but I'm going to say this anyway. I am sad that we don't have an opportunity to vote on this tonight. Just in case there's any confusion about why that is, let me get the wording on this precise. Because of an injunction issued last week, council cannot take a final vote on the ordinance tonight. The injunction has nothing to do with the merits of the proposed property transactions or any legal concerns about them. It stems from a highly technical issue about how two executive sessions were noticed more than a year ago, purely procedural and not substantive. Staff advises us that time is now a factor. The Action Center must close on this property by the end of 2025 to retain key funding that expires this year, and Ms. Breyer spoke in more detail about what that entails. Our city attorney's office is working hard, and thank you, to resolve the injunction, and we're hopeful it could be lifted as soon as tomorrow. We will likely make a motion tonight, and you've been hearing these motions throughout the evening, to schedule a special meeting Wednesday evening so we can move quickly if that happens. So I just wanted to demystify and kind of read the stage directions for anyone that's wondering what's going on. I will just add, I do think it's a crying shame that we can't all vote on this tonight in the middle of an ordinary meeting. It's clearly what we all want to do, but we certainly, you know, we believe in the rule of law around here, and we're certainly going to follow the injunction. So just want to thank Ms. Breyer and all the community members that have come out and shown up and talked about this. As someone who also lives in Ward III, I would be so proud to welcome the Action Center and the vision that they've put forward tonight to Ward III, and I really do hope that it all moves forward without further delay after this week.
Counselor Ryan.
I think so many have, as Counselor Lowe just said, have really said it better than any of us. You know, I just want to think about, you know, this is exactly what we need more of. We need more instances where government, businesses, nonprofits come together to solve problems. If this didn't exist, we would be spending years trying to figure out how we could facilitate and bring those businesses and nonprofits together to form what is so remarkable, and not just remarkable in its existence, but it's here in Lakewood, and that we have an opportunity to keep it here rather than our Vada or Wheat Ridge where they also desperately need these services. And certainly, the Action Center is going to provide those services, but it's going to be here in Lakewood, serving Lakewood. It's going to be that accessible. All the services, the things that this, hopefully, the vision that will come to fruition, I think is just outstanding and astounding. One of the speakers talked about creating the connection, the community, and I'm going to lean back to, I volunteered with Ron McDonald Houses in Iowa and Missouri, and to a lesser extent here in Colorado. One of the houses served kids who were there long-term. You got to know the kids, you got to know the families. And one of the things that you saw was the families leaning on each other. They became the resource, supporting each other, and that's exactly one of the, you know, we talk about all the hardcore, the hard services, the things that we can touch, the food, the education. This is one of those softer ones that I think gets unspoken, and it's no less meaningful. It is an incredible thing to see other people going through trauma, going through hardship, being able to lend their support to each other, and people feeling open because they know they're not alone. It's just an incredible service. I can't wait to support this. I share, I think, everyone up here somewhat frustration that we can't vote tonight. I look very much forward to supporting it when we can.
Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. I echo many of my fellow counselors in the sentiment that a lot of what I had been planning to say, I think, was very eloquently said by many of our community members, so I'll be brief, but some of the history that we walked down with some of the folks who have been here and with some of the comments we've been getting just reminded me of some of my experiences knocking doors and asking people, you know, what issues matter to you? What, you know, has been your story here in Lakewood? And I met some people who were part of those founding conversations with the Action Center, people who have received services from the Action Center, people who volunteer at the Action Center. This really isn't us, right? So often, how we talk about services like food benefits, like workforce development, put us in camps where we are different from people, when the reality is, again, all of us are way closer to needing the Action Center than we are to being Jeff Bezos, and I'm going to say that every time we talk about that because it's important and it's part of how our society is structured right now, but also because, as we've heard from some of the personal experiences, it's services like these that have made many of us up here and many of us out there who we are, and given our families the opportunity to achieve what we want to achieve, right? And like, and whether or not those services have been a direct part of your journey, they have helped your journey in some way because it really is about us. And I just really wanted to emphasize that because I think that, looking forward to this positive vision, we're going to be in a scheme that is going to be probably even more bleak than we are now with the kind of trend and what support from the federal level is looking like and trends in our economy. And so I look forward to this being a space that works for all of us and for the strength of our community because I think that, as Ms. Breyer spoke about so eloquently and as I've heard at the community meetings, everybody is looking for community and a way to be a part of it and a way to kind of get out of some of our fear of each other right now. That was really something I heard at the doors, too, and I hope that this can be one small and important piece of how we do that. And so I appreciate all the work that has been put into creating this vision and all of the work that is going to come after, because this is just the beginning of that, even though it seems like there's been so much done so far. And I will, in this future, be sad to not be such a close neighbor of the Action Center, but look forward to supporting whatever the transition that that looks like for our area up in West Colfax and what's to come from that space. And just did want to shout out to, I know, as is evidenced, right, like, there is just never going to be an outcome that works for every single person involved because every single person has very different ideas, I learn every day, on issues I never expected to in this community, and this is a big one, right? What's happening in our neighborhoods? I totally understand that. But I did just want to shout out all of the diligent work of the Action Center and of the city and the community engagement over the last few months, and also just really wanted to shout out my fellow counselors, Counselor Lowe and Counselor Cruz, and I know Counselor Stewart, who was part of this at some point, too, now representative, but you all have done a mountain of work that is not evident in this conversation as clearly, I think, as it should be, and I know that you've been working really hard to listen to people and to hear people, even if you couldn't reach agreement with them. So I just wanted to acknowledge you for your efforts. I saw that in the community meeting, and I know you'll look forward, I look forward to seeing all of the work that's going to be put in moving forward as well.
And before we go to a vote, I will add a thank you to the Action Center for your commitment to being a good neighbor, your commitment to hearing what the neighbors around are asking for and being available for them. That's paramount. You know, we're offering services, but we also want to do it in a way that is cohesive within our community as well. So thank you so much for that. And then in addition to that, for your, this very innovative idea of approach that it is founded on, what other than absolute collaboration? And with that gratitude, I want to extend that out to all of our partners that are in the room tonight as well because you guys are so meaningfully part of that. You know, workforce development has been a huge thing for me from the day one. I'm a financial planner. You know, for me, it's about how do you get in, how do you make a living, and then how do you set yourself up to be able to build wealth over time? And workforce development is at the core of that, and so very excited to see that you're offering or working on, you know, having Red Rocks there to be able to help elevate people, in addition to having CrossFit and the other programs that you have there that continue to do that as well. Lakewood will be well-served, not only for helping our community members be more educated... Lakewood will be well-served, not only for helping our community members be more educated towards specific things that can help them grow financially and mentally and, you know, educationally, we'll say, but also just the ability to also create a workforce that is right here, that helps people be able to work, live, and play in their own backyard as well. So I'm very hopeful that that will be part of the outcome here and looking forward to being part of the process, hopefully, when we can vote someday soon. So with that, I have no more hands up, so we'll go ahead and vote. And again, this vote is on the amendment for the tabling, actually, it's not even an amendment. We're tabling this to Wednesday, October 29th. So a yes vote would be for the table. With that, please cast your votes. All right, and that passes 10 yeses and 10 noes. Okay, thank you, everyone. We will now, we move on to the second portion of general public comment. Very excited that it is not 1:00 a.m., so we have our second portion of general public comment tonight. And with that, I would like to invite to the front of the room John Brown.
Thank you, and thank you for giving me this chance to speak. Hi, my name is John, and I'm a father of a wonderful child who happens to be trans living in Adams County. I originally wrote this in the August 25th council meeting, but this was one of the first meetings going over the zoning issues here, so I didn't have a chance that night or many nights since. I then rewrote this for the October 13th meeting, and I waited with many others until late in, late into the night, only to witness a council vote to end the meeting before we had a chance to speak. We waited over five hours to address the council, only to be denied. To say it kindly, opportunities to be able to speak here have been sparse. While the council has taken some good steps for Jax, including the approval of an oversight committee, a lot more work needs to be done. We need to make sure the oversight committee has real powers in place to investigate the Lakewood police and the coroner. It needs to be completely independent from police influence, to have complete and unrestricted access to all records, including body camera footage, and it needs proper powers to be able to subpoena witnesses. The committee should include a Lakewood trans person, a legal representative, and an advocate for Jax's mother, Sherilyn. The following is what I initially wrote two long months ago on August 25th, and this message is still important to hear today. Over the weekend, I listened to a 90-minute interview with Jax's mother on a podcast called Version of Events. In this interview, she goes over some of the abuses she endured while managing the investigation of Jax's death. She also discussed how a lot of bad actors were feeding false information on the police tip hotline. How much did these bad tips influence the police or the coroner's findings? How many stories of Jax's supposed drug use did the police consider? Did the police ever acknowledge Jax's prescription to Adderall when the toxological results came back, or did they already fully commit to their decision that she was a drug addict? Early in Jax's investigation, the Lakewood police told Jax's mother that they were convinced that this was not a hate crime. According to Jax's mother, at this point in the investigation, the police had yet to speak to the coroner about any findings or received any toxological results. I must ask, what information the police had to determine this? Was it only from their preconceived notion that she was a drug-addicted trans woman and thus not worthy of their time? Jax's body was found seven weeks post-mortem outside the window of one of the primary suspects of the investigation. This suspect stated that there was consensual GHB use. GHB, the date rape drug. The police said that there was not enough evidence to arrest the suspect. My question is, if the murdered individual was a cis white woman, would the police have gone ahead and arrested this suspect? Would they have pursued the investigation of him instead of writing it off? Would they have treated this case with more urgency for the sake of the victim? In my mind, there is little doubt that there'd be arrested the people involved with the murder. This is why we need an independent oversight committee. At some point while following this investigation, a transition in my thinking took place. I am no longer thinking of if my child gets killed, but when? When my child gets murdered, will she be on caring streets of Lakewood? When the police discover her body two months later, will it be just-
Mr. Brown, your time is up.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Brandon Pelts, Braden Pelts. Tanya Allen. After Tanya Allen, I have Elliot Howe.
I've, I'm Tanya Allen. I represent myself. I live in Golden, Colorado. I am the proud mama bear of a 19-year-old transgender son who spent every summer across the plaza here at Lakewood's Cultural Center, who works here in Lakewood, and I am so proud of my kid, yet I am terrified every single day to have him live in the world and especially to, to know that this beautiful woman, Jax, who I didn't personally get to know, but that the possibility that my, my son could end up like Jax, stuffed between two buildings, half naked, and that nobody will give a, a care, and that my son will not get the justice that he deserves. And so I stand here today, not because I knew Jax, but because I'm a parent. And if you have children, or you were a child, or you know a child, you would want that for your child, too. You would want your child to be honored as the human that they are and, and cared for because, just because they exist and because they're a decent, loving, amazing human being, not because they're a particular color or gender, or just because they exist and because you love them and because they're human. So I'm here today because I would want, as a mother, to be able to demand oversight if it was my son who was found dead after 52 days, because I know, I can only imagine the pain that Jax's mom experienced as she wondered where her child was, as she couldn't get answers from the police, as no one to this day has still been arrested for this horrific crime, and yet somehow we think it's okay to blame Jax because maybe she had some drugs in her system, but we don't really know. We haven't done the due diligence to make sure that she's gotten a full investigation and that she got the justice that she deserves. But you would want that for your child. I would want that for my child. So I ask you today to please, please, please consider that this has not gotten the attention that it deserves, that it's not gotten the, the follow-through, the foresight, that all the things that you would want for your child to make sure that they got justice, do that here. Do that for Jax. Do that for your community, because our trans kids are running around here, paying their taxes, working in your community, supporting others in their community. They're part of this community. I'm part of this community. Do what's right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Comden.
I just want to make an observation about the need of food in our community. Every Saturday, I usually go to Brown Bag Ministries, that's located in the parking lot of Mount Air Christian Church. I usually bring two teenage, two teenage boys with me so they can get food for their family, and then I pick up some food to make chili for Fridays and also get food for a friend of mine who's immobile. Usually, I go there and I stand in line for about an hour and a half. Two Saturdays ago was the longest I was ever in line for two hours, and then when I went on this Saturday, it was way longer than I'd ever seen it before, way longer than the two hours, and, you know, me and the boys had to huddle around and decide that we weren't going to stay in line all day. So the need is already there. I think we need more food and volunteers for places like the Action Center, Brown Bag Ministries, Joy's Kitchen, even though they're not in Lakewood anymore, but they're spitting distance from Lakewood anyways, and all the other organizations helping feed people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben David Hensley.
My name is Ben, and again, I live in Ward Two, and I rise today, this evening, to ask all of you, as a city council, to commit to finding a creative, local, and Lakewood-specific part of the solution that can adequately respond to the coming crisis of hunger that is already unfolding and that will strongly impact our city exponentially once the federal Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, benefits expire and are no longer funded in November. This funding will cease because of the truly reprehensible politics of the Trump administration, whose U.S. Department of Agriculture is sitting on $5 billion of emergency funding that is specifically meant to support a program like SNAP in a time such as this. This same administration currently and hypocritically argues in a memo that this discretionary use of emergency funding cannot apply to SNAP during a government shutdown, despite the fact that they used that same discretion to fund the Women, Infants, and Children Nutrition Assistance Program in this shutdown already. I rise this evening to condemn the Trump administration's cavalier decision to enact hunger in our city and recognize it for the greedy wickedness that it is, a blatant wielding of brute force politics to try and win points in this national conversation and to shift blame. But we see this for what it is, the most corrupt presidency this nation has ever seen, taking food literally out of the mouths of people who need it most. It is shameful, and it deserves a robust rebuke at the ballot box next year if we are lucky enough to have free and fair elections in this country by then. In the meantime, I am concerned, I am afraid, and I urge city council to seek out whatever contingency or flexible funding or any other levers that can be pulled or might be available in our city's treasury to support our local food banks in Lakewood and undergird what will also hopefully be the dispersing of emergency funding from the Joint Budget Committee, Committee and the Colorado Legislature to our food banks in Colorado. This is a moral crisis. And so I urge all of you to respond to it with clear eyes and with open hearts. Our food pantries will need support in the weeks and probably months to come. God willing, that this shutdown will end soon, but until then, please find some way to get more resources where they need to go so that our hungry neighbors do not starve. Thank you.
Thank you. Bradley Bruce.
It shocks me every time. Hi, my name is Brad Bruce. I live in Ward Two. Real quick, I do want to, I really liked what Ben just said, that was fantastic. I think things are going to get incredibly bad very quickly, and I really do, I don't think there is any money because of Tabor and any number of other issues, but I think things are, are going to get really bad. Crime is going to get really bad, people are going to start stealing food to feed their families, as they should, so that, I just wanted to touch on that. But the real reason I'm here to speak in general public comment is to say that I am unequivocally in support of police oversight for Jax. I have had the displeasure of being at so many of these meetings in the last two years, probably more than anyone else in the audience, and I've been at city council meetings that lasted one hour, I've been at city council meetings that lasted 24 hours. But I've only seen you guys cut off the second half general public comment a few times, and that's usually only when I'm the only person in the room. So I didn't, I, I will admit, I, I left the meeting, the last meeting, early, so I don't exactly know what time you guys cut it off. It sounds like it was around 1:00 a.m., and I know you guys are paid less than minimum wage, but I think it is kind of gross that you guys couldn't just let the last few people talk at the last meeting. And I get, I get it, it's 1:00 a.m., you all have day jobs, none of you are paid well enough, but these people, you know, they, they've been here so many times, like, it's, it's incredible how much they are fighting for this, and I think the least you can do, if you're not going to do anything tangible for them, and I think you should, but if you're not going to do that, you, the least you could do is listen to them. So again, I would prefer you actually do some police oversight, because, I mean, here's the thing, like, the police are not good people even without this investigation going on. Like, how many pets do they kill in the United States every year? How many people do they murder in, in the, in the United States every single year? Like, what are we doing here? Like, they need oversight even if they weren't messing up investigative murder investigations, you know? So I, I, I think this is needed regardless, and I think it's ridiculous that these people have to fight so hard for you guys to listen to them and implement something that I think should already exist. So that's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And last one up tonight, I have Vixeria Oratom. Nope, okay. Then that is the end of general public comment. Oh, okay.
And then the last, or the one person I have signed up is Chris Tenorio.
Good evening to everybody at city council. I live in Ward One, and my dad recently brought to my attention the future of the emergency warning sirens, because not many people have access to smartphones or any other important ways to get emergency information, like, say, for severe, for severe thunderstorm warning, tornado warning, or any man-made disasters or Amber Alerts. And I'm good with a little show and tell, this is what I use to get information out to other ham radio operators in the field, because I myself am a ham radio operator. My call sign is Kilo Delta Zero, Delta Uniform Juliet. And I would urge you guys to keep the outdoor warning siren system in conjunction with the Smart 911 system and wireless emergency alerts, because that could save lives when seconds count. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ren Ash, and I would like to sincerely apologize to five of you, the five who voted to allow the grieving community members of Jax Skretan to speak. And I would also like to extend my sincerest gratitude to all of you for allowing us to speak this evening. Thank you. I do everything I can to live my life with peace and gentleness and sweetness. I am not a violent person, despite the narratives surrounding trans women. I did not know Jax Skretan. We were not friends, but when I read about her story, I saw myself, and when I read about her mother and her pain and her lack of information, I thought of my mother, whom I have a great relationship with, and how hard she would be fighting to find me. And I am grateful for this community that shows up to remember this woman that has not been served justice. I'm grateful for the moment to speak with you all because I do enjoy being a friend, and I should like to call you all my friends, but I can't really do that when the value is placed upon civility and decorum over listening to grieving hearts. It's not about abiding by this or that social standard. I'm, I'm autistic. I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any mechanisms for really understanding most of that, anyway. But I've been called a lot of things, and the most important one is I've been called kind. And it is with that kindness and that love in my heart that I had a very human moment where I didn't feel respected and I did not have any respect to return to you, and I apologize for the way that that manifested in this room. On behalf of my grandmother, I would like to apologize for raising my voice, because she would not like that, and I'm a southern girl and I got class. I just want you all to know that I appreciate you setting aside this time for the community to be heard, and that we may not agree on many things, but it could have happened to any single one of you, any single one of us. And all that I am asking is that you put the time into making sure the people that are responsible for this are held accountable and that answers are found to the question that Sherilyn has. Thank you.
Is that our last one? Okay, all right. Now we move forward to general business. And for item 9A- And for item 9A, I will hand the floor over to Counselor Mayat Guerrero.
Thank you very much. Sorry, the transition is always like difficult and jarring. So for council, and I think for the public, this has sort of been a long time coming. Of course, this is the moment that my iPad is getting slow. I was just pressing the wrong button, great. Okay, so this has been a long time coming, this is essentially a request for council action to formalize a vote and the level of priority that the council feels around getting the inclusionary housing ordinance done, and also suggests some basic parameters based on some of the contracted studies that we've already had, discussions we've had here, and about two years of discussions at the Housing Policy Commission, in addition to a tremendous amount of staff research, and again, consultant, consultant information, and then like our own collaborative efforts on the HPC primarily. We are still having a study session next week on this topic, but I think to me that is a really great time to make sure that we are solidifying some of the timing. This is intentionally written with like benchmarks and timing that are optimistic, but less than as specific as I would love this to be, but recognizing that this is a large topic is difficult, it's like a difficult thing to get done. We know that there's several steps that have to happen, and an amount, an amount of staff capacity that has to be allocated towards it. It seemed extremely reasonable to myself, to some members of staff, and to the HPC, and I believe to the majority of council, but we'll find out, to want to have a formalized up-down vote on it, so it can be very, very clear for the purposes of the staff and the public, to mark what's coming and how critical we really find this to be the next big step on housing since passing the regular zoning code has just happened. So with that, I mean, I can do a formal motion, but it's not a request for an ordinance change, it's like a request for staff action, so I forget the exact way to do that. But if there's questions or comments before I do that, I'd love to, especially from HPC members about it, who helped write it, but also from folks who aren't in the HPC who maybe have unresolved questions on this. Again, pointing to the idea that the point is really around the prioritization and core concepts, recognizing that the study session and then the actual ordinance process will be where you actually dig in on all of these variables to make the law make the most sense in the city of Lakewood.
So you can go ahead and make a motion.
Make your motion, yeah. Okay. So I move that in the, in preparation for the forthcoming NEXUS study, which is going to provide critical date, timing, and final financial and economic infrastructure for the potential of inclusionary housing ordinance, or an IHO, for the city of Lakewood, but that we, as a council, request staff to begin drafting a preliminary IHO in order for it to be ready on the first, in the first half of 2026, or as soon as possible in the completion of the NEXUS study.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Ryan and Counselor Furman.
I just want to thank our Chair of the HPC for pushing this through. I mean, this is a long time coming, and there's been frustrations, I know, but you've been able to take egos and a lot of different moving parts in getting us to this point, which has been a Herculean test, so I wanted to say that. This is also something I think a number of us really want to see. We would have loved to have seen it a year ago, but you know, we are where we are, and so I hope everyone on council will recognize the hard work that our Chair and staff have put into this and support it.
Counselor Furman and Counselor Low.
I also applaud the work, obviously, inclusionary zoning is one of those things that's been talked about for a long time. I hate to get into like many great questions, but I did have one, and maybe I'm misreading it, but if the initial minimum is 5% and potentially going to 8%, but it applies to, is that, is that percent in those situations where you have four units, is it then function as a fee in lieu, like a percentage of the value? Okay, thank you.
That's how it tends to be modeled places, but it honestly, it does depend, and I think that there has been some conversation about slightly increasing the number of units that trigger this. I know that Littleton is one of our key models here, because it is really proven, at the time it got a lot of critique for being a less ambitious model, but in this moment and in this market, is being really celebrated as something that's still working. And so that essentially is the sweet spot. There's actually kicks in immediately, and that has had some difficulty in implementations, they're looking at adjusting that, which is why I started at that four-unit amount. So yes, technically it would end up basically just being a fee in lieu, unless you make one unit affordable, because that's how that works. Yeah. And I'm happy to answer more on this, there's, these numbers have obviously been thought about, but I know we have like a whole discussion next week. But if there's other things that either, that just feels sort of not workable, or people really want to know, I think it's totally appropriate to ask questions.
Counselor Low.
No, just want to echo what Counselor Ryan said, plus one on that. Thank you, Chair Mayat Guerrero, for, for leading us through innumerable meetings on this, and it's exciting we're voting on this. I think on the, on the parameters question, like, the, the good news is, we do, well, depending on your view, the good news, the not-so-good news is we, we still have a number of months to get through an NEXUS study before we can actually tee up a formal vote on this ordinance. I think this is, this is getting us in process that we have a draft of the ordinance ready to go. On a couple of the parameters, like 5%, 8%, you know, the, up to four units, or whether it's more than four units, those are very, very, you know, but those are changes that we can make if we need to over the coming months. The goal is to get like a draft ordinance that we can work with. I will just finally suggest, maybe this isn't necessary, but given the sort of, the lateness of the hour, the good, unless folks have sort of urgent questions or concerns about this, I hope that we can vote for it. And the good news is we have a study session in a week to talk more about this and get more context on this.
Thank you, Counselor Low. I do want to echo just thanks to the full HPC, a huge amount of work has gone into this. And also, just for the sake of being able to read this more easily for my fellow counselors and for the public, to, yes, I think that the real details absolutely will be discussed at many, many dates in the future, not just one, but like a lot, but that's sort of the key components that we really want to see that are in here is having clear affordability requirements and definitions, phased dedication requirements that allow the developers essentially to like adjust and understand this as it, as it moves into place, and then a clear fee in lieu option that balances these values that are articulated here. So those are sort of the core concepts of what we want to see as a minimum there, recognizing that then all of those specifics are really adjustable.
Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. I, I'm also on the Housing Policy Commission, HPC, and have really appreciated all of the work and the speakers and the nuances. It's really not an easy topic, and so as we've heard about, wow, it's taken us a long time, well, we really dug into it, and there's so many different angles to look at it, and so that's why it took us a long time, and I'm so glad that our Chair has shown this leadership and is bringing this forward, so thank you for that, and we'll look forward to moving this forward. Appreciate it.
All right, seeing no more hands up. When you read it, did you read it as a motion yet? Okay. And a second, thank you. All right, no more hands, please go ahead and cast your votes. That passes 10 yeses and zero noes. And item 9B.
Yes, I would like to offer a motion to support any scheduling that we may need to consider over the next couple of days. So I'd like to offer the following motion. I move to hold a virtual special meeting on Wednesday, October 29th at 6:00 p.m. for the limited purpose of taking action on ordinances 2025-33, 2025-34, 2025-35, or to modify the date that is made necessary by a court decision.
Second. Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council comments or questions? Seeing none, please go ahead and cast your votes. That passes 10 yeses and zero noes. And with that, we will move on to our council reports tonight, starting with Ward One.
Yes, thank you. A couple of updates from Ward One, but first I wanted to take a moment and take some personal privilege here on the dais. On the October 13th meeting, we, many who were here in the room that night, or in those who watched online, sort of saw the volume and prolificness of the public hearing that evening. At times, it was abusive towards council, and so this was one of many long and hard meetings. Unfortunately, on the 13th, I had to join virtually, and so I wasn't in the room that evening, and I made a motion at the end of the night for us to end public comment. I had no sense of who was in the room, I just had a sense of the fatigue that I know I was feeling and that my colleagues were surely feeling. And all that to be said, there was no excuse for that. So I am sorry for the, that, to make that motion, and I'm sorry that we decreased a community's ability to share, especially after they had waited such long hours. I do want to say that I did reach out to some of the folks that were organizing to help just give a little context on that, and I appreciate that the grace that they offered me in that, and also recognize that in our current climate with so much that's being navigated, that I'm sad for that. So I just really wanted to offer that apology and just recognize that voices are valuable in this space, and I'm sorry for the harm that I caused by decreasing the ability for those voices to be heard. So from that, I'd love to just offer a couple of Ward One updates. For those who are really excited to understand what's happening with the Westland development, there is going to be an open house on October 30th, so this Thursday, at the Art Hub, which is in the Casper Nina parking lot, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So if you're interested in seeing what is going on with that project and the updates on that, I encourage you to attend. This isn't in Ward Two, but, it's in Ward Two, but I don't care, because Ward One people have reached out to me to say how excited they are to see the new mural at Wadsworth and Colfax. Many of our Applewood neighbors hauled a ton of rocks two summers ago to help get the rock sculpture garden in place, and we're really excited to see a continued investment in that, so I encourage folks to drive by and take a look. And just one more note, don't forget to vote. And I'll turn it over to my co-counselor.
There you go, thank you. We are having a change in our date for our November Ward meeting. Typically, we have it the first Saturday in the month. However, because of December coming up and there being so many holiday activities, we will not be having a December Ward meeting. Therefore, in order to split the difference, our November meeting will come in the middle of the month, and that would be the third Saturday, which is November 15th, same time, that is 9:30 to 11:00, and same place, Holy Shepherd Lutheran Church. Hope to see you there the 15th of November. Thanks.
Ward Two.
Sure, I can get started. I don't have much to report, except that I believe that this is my last full-length regular meeting. I think I'll get to talk about it, the last, last one, where I exchange with my, with my next person, so I will save my feelings until then. I do also just want to thank everybody who showed up for the Action Center today. I think it's always impressive to see the way that the people who show up these days is just so different than it was a few years ago, and it warms my heart every single time to watch the way that you all want to care about each other. We had a shared Ward meeting with Ward Three on traffic safety. We had a huge amount of people turn out, it was in a different location, a slightly different time, that is, one of the, the things that Counselor Cruz and I have worked really hard to do is to make different Ward meetings accessible to different types of the population, depending on your schedule, your home life, et cetera. So it was a really fabulous conversation about what we have done to try to mitigate the amount of like traffic, both traffic accidents and traffic car, vehicle and pedestrian incidences, and also got a lot of great feedback about additional future things to consider. And it was, it was wonderful to have the community there, reasonably so, folks who live near busy streets need more help and safety there. And then also, the Theater Flamboyant, which is at the Three Leeches Theater, which is, I always get like those relationships different, on the, which is the theater in the 40 West District on Teller and Colfax, has a new show that has a curse word in the title, so I won't be sharing it, but I encourage you to check it out before the end of this weekend, it's their second Halloween like spooky show, so planning to attend that this week.
Thank you. To add on to the gratitude for the Ward meeting, I think I appreciated the collaboration with our Ward Three and Ward Five, technically we were in Ward Five too, so Ward Five neighbor, to talk about a real, an issue that's really important in the community, I think gave us a lot of great input, in addition to the input that's getting collected to the survey that Counselor Low and Counselor Cruz very generously included us in now, so get your comments in there, for the upcoming study session on traffic coming in December, so really looking forward to that. And then also, it's been annual meeting season, so thanks to Two Creeks and the Okene Park neighborhoods that had really beneficial meetings in the last couple of weeks since we've been here last. Just a couple of events to flag, and then a couple of comments. In addition to what Counselor Mayat Guerrero shared, there's some Dia de Muertos events that are coming up in the district. So at Jefferson Junior/Senior High School this Saturday from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., there's going to be a Dia de Muertos celebration, very family-friendly, go check it out. And then also, there's going to be the November Art Crawl in the 40 West, that's Dia de Muertos theme, that one's always a huge hit and has a lot of great variety of art and artists in our community, celebrating a really important time in the community, so excited about that. And then also, there's going to be two exciting events coming up at the Hub. There's going to be the Fall Colfax Cleanup on Friday from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. Come, connect with your neighbors, get involved in the community, it's going to be fun, they're trying to make it a recurring thing. And then also, on November 6th, we've heard a lot about transportation in this chamber in my time so far, and RTD, and RTD wants to hear from you. They're going to be doing a town hall with Director Pagliari at the Hub, November 6th at 6:00 p.m. There's childcare available if you request it ahead of time, there'll be interpretation, food, all of it, I hope to see you there, I'll be there. You can check it out at bit.ly/townhall4mn, because we're, it's for District M and District N. So looking forward to that. And then, just wanted to say two comments on some themes that came up. I've been getting quite a lot of outreach since the announcement was made that November SNAP benefits are going to be frozen for the time being as the government shutdown continues. And thanks to some data shared by very involved constituent Pastor Ben Tate and Hensley, know that this is going to affect over 2,000 people in my zip code. 2,000 of my direct neighbors are not going to have crucial funds to buy food that they had expected, budgeted for, and planned for because of what's happening at the federal level. And I find it unacceptable that choosing between increases in healthcare costs that people can't stomach, which is what the shutdown, what folks are fighting over, right? And whether to put food in the bellies of our kids and our families and our older adults, like, that's just an unacceptable choice that we should never have to make and that we have the funds to not make. And so I really hope that the USDA will act to use the funds that they have, but in the, in the interim, I know we heard last month from the JFCO Food Policy Council about the work that they were doing already to address the growing food need through the Feeding JFCO Together Project, which is a fund on Colorado Gives to fund 10 food pantries that serve JFCO, and so if you're interested in giving that support, it's coloradogives.org/events... And so if you're interested in giving that support, it's coloradogives.org/events/FeedingJFCO. And I promise this is the last thing that I will say, but I, we haven't had a lot of time for comments recently. So I just wanted to, A, like, thank the Mayor Pro Tem for, I think, modeling what is so admirable about her leadership so much in extending the apology and what, what she did around the communication around, kind of curtailing public comment last meeting. I think that we saw a lot of great examples of what seeing each other as people in government, which can be hard, in this dynamic tonight. And so I appreciate many of the people who came and shared that sentiment with us as well. I think it was just evident by the end of it, it was a hard meeting for all of us, and I think we saw the best and worst parts of ourselves. And so, thank you to everyone who's giving us grace in that. And just wanted to, to thank folks for their dedication. I know it's hard work to show up here and appreciate the dedication that you have to your loved ones, whether that's a loved one you know, knew in life, or one that you've gotten to know, because the queer community is, is more than just the folks that we're directly connected to. And so, I understand and hear you and how frustrating it is when the rhetoric around who you are and who you love can be so toxic and so dehumanizing at the federal level, just how hard it is to, to hold space for, the challenges that come up in working in the government space, which is how slow things happen sometimes, and how unartful the ways that these meetings run are in what would be an ideal interaction around hard issues that we all care about. So, just want to say that I see you and I hear you, and appreciate you all for showing up. And, just because I've been getting some questions about it from folks who listen to our meetings, but might not have some of the context and the background from some of the folks who are organizing, just do want to say, we can't say much publicly as a council at this point, but the Jax's case is with the DA's office. That will be moving forward on however they deem fit. And so we look forward to hearing about how that will move forward. But just wanted to make that clear, because that has been a surprise to some folks I've been talking to about this issue.
Ward 3.
Thank you, Counselor Cruz. I, I don't have much to add to that, and I asked a bunch of questions earlier tonight, so I'll make this brief. I knew you were going to mention this, and you did. I'll just double-click on the, this, this RTD Town Hall. I think it looks like it's going to be great with Director Pagliari, that's 40 West Arts Building. It's Thursday, November 6th, 6:00 PM, program starts at 6:30. You can get more information at bit.ly/townhall4mn, that's for Districts M and N, if anyone's able to follow along. But you can show up at 6:30 on Thursday, November 6th, should be a good meeting. Also, just wanted to highlight that there is a, for folks who do have feedback, whatever it is on, on our police department, there is an open survey at Lakewoodtogether.org/lpdsurvey. And, last I checked, that survey was still open. Feel free to, good opportunity to provide feedback, it's really quick, there's like 10 questions. I'd encourage people to take that if they haven't yet, if they have feedback about our police department. I want to thank Councilors Matt Guerrero, Cruz, and Cruz for joining me for the joint Ward 2, Ward 3 Town Hall this past week. It was a really good turnout. And if you, if you're in Ward 2 or Ward 3 and you have feedback on speeds, traffic safety, traffic calming, I mean, you haven't had a chance to fill out our survey, do your best to do it. Hopefully, you've seen links floating around. I posted on my Facebook page, so feel free to check that out. The link's there, it's also elsewhere. We'd love your feedback. If you haven't had a chance to provide it yet, if you attended the meeting but you didn't get a chance to ask a question or make a comment, you can provide it in that survey. We would love to hear from you. We have indicated that we're going to follow up with a letter, trying to summarize some thoughts, reflections, and feedback that we've gotten from the community on this topic between now and, and our traffic calming study session on December 1st. And that's all I have to say. And, vote! If you haven't voted, vote. Election day's coming up, November 4th, get your ballot. It's, it's basically too late to get your ballot in the mail, after, at this point, I think. So, drop it off in a, in a Dropbox, and vote by Election Day, Tuesday, November 4th.
Few things I'd like to bring up. First and foremost, I just want to speak to Ward 3 constituents in regards to the Action Center. I think one thing we were able to do tonight is to see the credibility and partnership that the Action Center has had over numerous decades here in Lakewood and Jefferson County. And I, so I just encourage anyone in Ward 3, too, to keep that in mind. They have continued to be a good partner over the last 50, going 60-plus years, and they're not looking to change that. So please, you know, take serious the stories that you've heard. You know, I, I have shared with the community that there was a moment in time, myself and my family, had to use resources similar like the Action Center. So I, I do, you know, want to thank those who were, came up tonight to share their stories and be vulnerable. You know, as mentioned multiple times tonight, we do need more now than ever to have organizations like the Action Center that help build community. So I just wanted to mention, you know, that. You know, I also wanted to just thank those who have been organizing for Jax's Kretan, the amount of effort that goes into it. You know, the, the team that they put behind organizing the rallies, as well as just the continued effort on creating space. This is a time where the, the trans community has been under attack, but they, here, here in Lakewood, have ensured through the last numerous meetings to ensure that they are not taking up those 10 spots and creating space. So I just want to thank that community and the organizer, organizers behind that. And then I, I just wanted, with, with Small Business Saturday coming here in Lakewood in November, for any of our small businesses here in Lakewood, please know that there are multiple organizations that you can connect with. We have our lovely Economic Development Team here with the city. We also have Lakewood Business Association, the West Metro Chamber, and Alameda Connects. So if you are ever looking to connect more with your fellow neighbors in the small business world, please reach out to those organizations, or feel free to reach out to me, and I will create those partnerships. Thank you.
Mayor, can you say one thing for 10 seconds?
Sure.
I forgot to thank Mike Whitaker from Public Works for joining us and speaking. We really appreciated his, his contributions and taking two hours to come and see a site the community wanted to see, and then answering a ton of questions from a large crowd. So, thanks again, Mike, for taking the time to join us Tuesday night.
Ward 4.
So, I think most of the community events have pretty well been covered here, so thank you for covering those already. I wanted to say thank you to staff. We had not our last Ward meeting, Ward 4 meeting, but the previous one. We contacted the city asking if someone from Public Works or the traffic folks could come, and Mike Whitaker showed up on a Saturday and, and spent considerable amount of time working through a lot of issues that the community had brought, and I'm, I'm so grateful for that. And then, at our last Ward meeting, we had not just the chief, but also one of the commanders, whose name escapes me, hopefully my co-counselor will remember his name. And it was a very engaging meeting, and we're just so grateful that we could have those two folks could join us at the Ward meeting and provide answers to so many questions that, that, that folks have. We don't have our November meeting scheduled yet, and other than the fact that, boy, if we heard some folks talking about feeling disenfranchised, vote. Please vote. It's coming in, as, drop it at the, at the ballot box, or show up at one of the polling places, including the library here in Belmar. And, vote, please.
Ward 5. Oh, sorry, one more.
That's all right. Not only do I not have the name, but I don't have a lot to add. Commander Alish?
Commander Alish.
Commander Alish, thank you.
That was Commander John Alish.
I appreciate that. It's important, because he was actually both dynamic and, and fun, and really brought an energy to the event that I think people got a lot of value out of. I, I don't think there's really anything else I need to add, although I, the one thing I will say is, I, I can't stress enough the, the sort of compassion everybody has around the issues of the Action Center and food insecurity. I think the one thing that, the only thing I would want to add to that, actually, is this, I think the reminder that a city is made of citizens, and our greatest asset is people. And the reason I say this is, there's a pragmatic reality. To anyone who questions the value of the Action Center, or figuring out ways that we get food, I think it's worth reminding people that people are not nearly as valuable to their children, to the community, to themselves, if they're struggling, whether it's to find food, or to find shelter. And there is a, like, just a pragmatic reality that we get way more out of our community and our neighbors if we are supporting them. This is the sort of basics of the social contract. So, anyone who questions it, it astounds me, even on a most practically utilitarian way, it's worth remembering that a city is made of its citizens, and then there's a value in, in making sure we take care of them, so, sorry.
Ward 5.
Last but not least, Fabulous 5. Um, yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add. I think the air is kind of out of the room at this point, but we are targeting November 15th for our next Ward meeting, and hopefully that will be confirmed soon. I do want to give a shout-out to Director DeAndrea for kind of facilitating some engagement between some of my constituents and Excel Energy with some of the concerns that they had due to wildfire mitigation, as well as power outages. So, I know she's already gone, but I wanted to say thank you again to her for that, and in particular, the people in Primrose were experiencing some power outages, and they have people on oxygen 24/7, so it gets a little scary. So hopefully, we can work something out there. And I did receive, for those that have asked, I think I've gotten slowdown signs out to most of the residents, that we're looking for them, but again, Public Works produced some additional signs for trying to get people to pay attention and slow down where they're driving, and be safe. And, other than that, again, I would encourage everyone to vote. If you feel like your voice isn't being heard, then this is the way to do it. So, thank you.
Okay, very last, but I will make this brief. I, first of all, I do, I want to say to our folks that have visited this evening and for the last several weeks, to impart the, the pleas for Jax's Kretan, and making sure that that case is done, and, and providing justice to Jax. I want to follow up on Counselor Cruz's comment, that the, the case is now in the care of the DA's court, and we're optimistic that now it is in their hands to move forward with that next step, and hopefully that will be prosecution, to make sure that that justice is, is taken care of in the courts. One thing that I apologize that has not been clear is that the council has been working, and staff has been working in the background, to put together a committee that will help address the, the challenges that came forward out of Jax's case, to make sure that we are creating a community that every member can feel comfortable calling and working with our police department. And we will be having more conversations on that in December. So I want to make it very, very clear, you are being heard. You're, even, you know, those of you that are watching that may not be here in person, you are being heard, and we are moving forward. It's not always easy to understand and see the pace in government, but it is happening. So I want to thank you all for your diligence, and I apologize that you had to move through the zoning code with us, and some very late nights that were a result of that. As one of my counselors pointed out, it wasn't just public comment that got cut off, we haven't had council reports for a very long time, which might be why they're a little windy tonight. So, want to say, say that to Jax's folks. Also, I've got a big welcome, I was, I had the opportunity to attend a ribbon-cutting on Friday evening for what I would call one of Lakewood's very exciting, maybe best Mexican food restaurants, it's actually in Colorado Mills. So I would encourage everybody to check out Pantera up at Colorado Mills, and go for a nice one-mile walk around the mall to walk that off afterwards. That was a really great event on Friday night, so welcome Pantera to the neighborhood. And with that, yes, echoing that it is too late to vote, mail your ballot, so please drop it off. There are box locations noted within your ballot envelope, so everything that you should need should be available to you. And with that, everybody, thank you so much for sticking with us again on a late night. I will go ahead and adjourn, be no further business this evening at 11:01 PM.